Just need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to sixth.
Ms. Mims? Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
That's the last one.
Excuse me, Dacson. Mr. Brooks?
Ms. Anne, Anne, could you read the board norms?
Mr. Brooks may be having some technical issues, but he was present. We're gonna see if we can get him back on.
That's the goal.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Pass six oh.
Okay. Uh...
Can you place the board agenda up and click on the board norms, please?
Five oh.
That's what you want, right?
Correction, five oh. Five oh.
Five oh, yeah.
They're gonna open it up.
Uh, we would like to read our board norms. I'm gonna ask Director Coleman that she...
It's right there. Yeah, no, 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 no. Go back to the to the screen, guys. It's right there. Board norms, board norms, board norms, board norms. There you go.
If Ms. Director Coleman could read it, please. Board norms. The United States and the state of Missouri. To the Hickman Mills School. Issues thoroughly, give feedback and engage in discussion.
Ms. Berger? Preparation. Come prepare for each meeting and ask questions in advance when possible. Uh, Director Townsend?
Communication. Be open-minded and respectful of diverse opinions. Let me do the next one since we missed some other ones.
Huh?
Collaboration. Be mission-driven work in a team effort with superintendent consider all views and ethics. Embodied integrity, conduct business in a fair, respectful, legal, and responsible manner.
Uh, did you read the last one? Did you read the last one?
You want me to read?
Yes, ma'am.
What? I can't read. Okay. Which one is that?
The last one. Leadership.
Set an example of respectful and civil leadership. What is this? This is the board norm?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you. All right. We will move on to Superintendent's comments. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. We've got a slate of acknowledgements this evening, and we'll try to expedite it as quickly as possible. First of all, let me say season's greetings, happy holidays, police navidad to everybody out there. And I know for staff, we're, and students, we've got one more day before the holiday break, and everyone's looking forward to that. Be safe, be well, but don't eat too much. I'm saying that, but I know you're gonna eat too much anyways. But anyways, I wanna give a quick DESI update for people who have been following. And DESI is the Department of Education, the secondary elementary for Missouri. And we've been in dialogue with them around our tremendous scores. If you haven't seen, go onto the website under Making the Grade, and you will see that we hit above the seventy percent that qualifies you to be recommended for accreditation, so... So, we are excited about that, and we're now sort of having conversations with DESI to bring forward the recommendation to give us accreditation. This is probably, it's been over a decade since we reached this milestone, so we're looking forward to it, and we'll continue those conversations and inform you when we've finally got the kind of resolution that we're looking for. I'm gonna spare you from going to the website. I was gonna go to the website. You can go to the website and see all kinds of great artifacts around the success our students have done, and our teachers and staff have supported. But if you're interested in getting to that deeper, go to the website and hit under Making the Grade. I think it's on the main page, and you can get all kinds of contextual items around that. So, congratulations to our staff who've worked tirelessly, not just this year, but the years before, to get to this point. And of course, congratulations to our students who performed at the right time, in the right moment, to get us this opportunity. So, thank you for that. Madam President, I'm gonna move to the first item that I have is we have a Around the Globe Initiative, Hickman Mills, where we're trying to get around the world with our students and give them some real-world experiences. And we were able to launch that this fall by having a delegation of legislators, community members, principals, teachers, and board members, and students, of course, go to Ghana. And they're here today to share a little bit about their presentation. Before I do that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, 'cause I know you'd wanna say some words to start.
Yes. I wanna welcome you all here. We have a great presentation for you regarding our Ghana trip, so I wanna share some reflections with my fellow board members and community members. This journey was indeed experienced like no other. While many of us have read about Africa and watched the films about the history, particularly the painful legacy of slavery, being there was profoundly moving. It touched our souls in ways words cannot fully capture. This trip was both an educational and a spiritual journey. We established a sister school and formed a partnership with the city of Accra, Ghana, and met with influential leaders such as the first female mayor of Accra, the king of the Ashanti people, and Ghanaian chiefs. We immersed ourselves in the rich culture. One moment that resonated deeply with me was the powerful statement by Ghana's first president. "As a nation, we must stand united, or divided we fall." This statement brings me to this board. We must stay united. Together, we have accomplished so much. We established the first welding school, partnership with a welding school, formed our first real-world learning center, expanding our two middle schools, two pre-K programs, and after years of efforts, achieving accreditation scores. These milestones are worth celebrating, reflecting, worth celebrating and reflecting our collective dedication and hard work. Our focus must remain creating opportunities for our students, staff, and community. Accreditation is a testament to our resilience, determination. We shall remain relentless, dedicated to that vision. Finally, I want you to hear directly from our students and fellow delegates who attended this trip. They will share how this journey inspired and impacted them, reinforcing why our unity and shared purpose matter so much. Let us continue to move forward as a team committed to excellence and progress. Thank you. I would turn it over to you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, can I get you to click on President Kendrick's slide? You've got the icon right on it. Click on that right there. These were the reflections that were stated in her opening, and you can see some of the... Go ahead, just channel through them. Just go to the next slide. So, this was the graphic that President was talking about. We had an audience with the first female, uh, mayor of Accra of a hundred and twenty-five years, and this was truly a gender moment. All the women got together and had a photo, and I know that they're using it in Accra in terms of sharing the visit from Kansas City and the representation of women. And I would say girl power, but I'm gonna say women power.
Women power.
That was displayed there. And this was a momentous opportunity here, where we're at the Ghana International Schools, one of the best schools in the country, and we signed a sister agreement with that school in forming some partnerships that we hopefully in the future will be able to exchange staff and students and have some initiatives that'll go across. And the President, you wanna talk to that?
Oh, no, you can go ahead.
The President talked about Kwame Nkrumah, who was the first president of Ghana, and he had independence in nineteen fifty-seven, and he was the first president to liberate any country in Africa for independence that started a cascade of independence across the continent. And this is the mausoleum where he's buried, that the group had an opportunity to see his mausoleum and his burial site. And then finally, the last slide? Was here's the President shaking the hand of the chief, the king of Banweir, which is the home place of the Kente cloth. Often when you see about African culture and they talk about the textiles and materials, this is the space, this is the place in the Ashanti kingdom where that cloth originates from. And we had an opportunity to have an audience, and the President had a chance to meet and shake the hands. And he's actually a graduate of University of Massachusetts.
Yes, yes.
So, with that, we'll call our principal from Ruskin and our students and staff to come and share their reflections.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. My name is Dr. Fields, but that was my old name. My new name is Quessi Awaji. And Quessi means Sunday, that's the day I was born, but together, that means powerful and complete. And I will talk a little bit more about that when we get to the slide on the renaming ceremony. But the first thing I wanna point out here is the Black Star Square. The Black Star there is a symbol for the freedom of all black people. There is one star because it is, because Ghana was the first African country to be liberated in nineteen fifty-seven. It was from the British. Slide, please. So, one of the things I always tell students at Ruskin is, when you graduate, get outside of Kansas City. See the world, see things, because you need to know what, there's a bigger world beyond the three blocks around your school. So, when Mr. O'Beane came to me and he said, "Fields, we're thinking about doing a Around the World Initiative and to go to Ghana." This was right down home plate for me. I was like, "Yes, this is absolutely what we need to be doing for our students." It introduces the students to the global community that we keep talking about, for the twenty-first century. Well, we're in...
The twenty-first century. And now they need to be able to see that there is more than life outside of Ruskin Heights. There's more to that. So, we wanna prepare our students to compete in global markets, and the best way to do that is to give them a firsthand experience in that global marketplace. So, slide, please. One of the things that Mr. O'Beane talked about is that we did go over to form a sister school partnership with GIS, or Ghana International School. We were six thousand miles away, six thousand miles away. And in this school, which is very similar to Ruskin in the makeup, but I do wanna point out that the students were those of diplomats in the area. So, but their makeup is pretty similar to what we have here at Ruskin, and they were still talking about pathways. They were talking about real-world learning, and this is six thousand miles away. So, we're doing something definitely right. We're on the right track. Slide, please. So, our purpose was to go over and collaborate with them and share ideas and set up a foreign exchange student program between them. We can send some of our students over there, they can send some of their students here, and we could fulfill that dream of preparing our students for the global economy. Next slide, please. Now, this slide here talks, when we were there, we were really emerged or submerged into the culture and climate of Ghana. And we went to see the National Museum, where they told us a little bit about the history of Ghana. We went to the Palace Museum, where they talked about the monarchy, and then also the Kwame Nkumar's tomb. And down in the bottom right of that slide, there's a quote from the first president, and it says, "I am not an African because I was born in Africa, but because it was born in me." That resonated with me, because it's not where I was born, it's who I am. And that was very powerful to me. We did do some fun stuff. I'm a little afraid of heights, so I don't know if I would say that was fun, but we did walk, do the canopy walk, which was a bridge walk, a hundred and thirty-one feet up, across the top of the rainforest, so that was kinda fun. We did do the Asen Manso Slave River Site, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And we did do some of the slave camps. Now, one of the things that we did at the river is they told us the history about when slaves, they walked a thousand kilometers to get to this location. And once they were there, they had to wash their, they washed their bodies with palm leaves, and they were to cut their hair and shave their beards with broken glass. And once they were all done, they polished them up with shea butter, and when they were bought, they were branded. Many of them died from the branding, because it was such a horrific thing. But then, they were shipped off away. Now, we did a reenactment of this in some sorts, but we only had to walk about a hundred kilometers, not kilometers, I'm sorry, a hundred meters down to the water, and we did that barefoot. And it was, I can imagine what it was like to walk a thousand kilometers. We did a hundred meters. But we did go to the slave castles. This here is Cape Coast Slave Castle. In the picture to the right, where there's just that one little beacon of light, that right there was their source of ventilation, their source of light, and their source of food. They threw the food down through that hole. And in a room no bigger than this, there were a thousand individuals, standing room only, for thirty to ninety days, waiting to be shipped out. Standing room only, and that's your only light. You could feel the weight of this situation in this room. You could feel the atrocities that were committed in that room, and it was overpowering. We also got to, that is a wax figure of the king, but we did get to meet the king, and I was able to take this picture. I got yelled at for taking pictures in a secure area, but I was able to snap that one. But it was amazing to go in and shake the hand of one of the most powerful monarchs in the world. So, that was an amazing day for us. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ross.
Yes?
Could you go back to the slide, previous slide?
Oh, I missed one. So, down in the bottom right, there is a picture of their, it was their vice president at the time he ran for president. And as we were driving down the road in the bus, I looked out the window, I said, "Oh, that's me." You know, and, yeah, everyone was like, "Fields, that's you." And yes, I mean, spinning image, to the point that we were walking around and folks thought that that was, that I was the vice president. And the kids were running up to me, "Hey, hey, what's your name? What's your name?" "Ernest." So, but we had to include that picture, because I mean, it's splitting image, and apparently I have some ancestral roots in Ghana. So, Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Dr. Fields. Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak tonight. If you wouldn't mind moving the slide ahead two, please? Thank you. Okay, so, yes, oh, thank you. Yeah, that's a good idea. So, I've divided my slides into two here. I have a slide on personal development, and it is a slide on professional development, because it was, this experience was quite personally powerful for me, but it also was, and I'm quite aware and grateful, that it was an investment in my pedagogy. And I take that very seriously. I took that very seriously, and I tried to soak up as absolutely as much as possible, but I'll get to that in a minute. So, on the personal side, this trip was really quite amazing from a number of ways, in a number of ways. One of them was the ability to have many conversations with not just the students and Dr. Fields, but also the superintendent, and President Kendrick, and other members of the delegation, many of whom have quite relevant connections to social studies. I teach American history and African-American studies, so it was a really incredible opportunity just to get some personal connections and also to be able to express my perspective as a teacher on some of the district initiatives, to hear about the district initiatives, to gain insight into the priorities of the district, and to think about them as I am teaching. So, it was really, I think that was a really wonderful opportunity for me, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. Also, it was excellent practice for classroom student management, you know, which was certainly a challenge at times, but also quite rewarding. So, I appreciate that. Also, on a personal note, my slide got cut off a little bit there, but as a person of European descent, it is always incredibly important to be exposed to non-white culture, you know? I've had the fortune of traveling quite a bit in my life, but mostly in this country or in Europe, you know, a little bit in Asia. But this was my first time in Africa, as it was for a lot of us, and it was humbling and, I think, important to be there and to see this African society so different from the one that I grew up in, but also incredibly essential to world history and to American history and everything, really. So, that was a wonderful opportunity. Thank you. Okay, next slide? Okay, so I thought I would talk explicitly about the things that we did and we discussed in Ghana that directly relate to the courses that I teach, have taught, will teach. I am conscious of the great and frankly sacred responsibility that I have teaching Black Studies at Ruskin High School. And so, to be given an opportunity to directly interface with the curriculum, and it was very directly linked to the curriculum that I am required to teach per the College Board. So, in, as an example, in African-American studies, I've given you three, there were much more than three, but these are the three that stood out to me, elements of my curriculum that we really explicitly addressed. One of them was matrilinear societies in Africa. So, the entire first unit of my class, really the first two units, are focused on Africa, exclusively in Africa. And one of the topics that I am to cover is something referred to as a queen mother. And before this trip, I assumed, I did my reading, of course, I assumed that it was the mother of a king. But in fact, it is much more than that. It could be any female relation, and they have an immense amount of power. More, you know, in the reading, it's just like, okay, they have a lot of power, you know? So, okay, I tell the students, "I have a lot of power," you know, and we look at examples. But to be there and to, you know, we took a tour of the palace of the Kingdom of Ashanti, and the tour guide discussed a lot of the specific responsibilities that they had and powers that they had. And now I can just transmit that to the students, you know? And it's really important to establish the female perspective in history throughout, throughout. So, of course, as Dr. Fields mentioned, and he did a good job of describing the slave forts, that's obviously a huge part of my class. And, you know, I think as Dr. Fields did a wonderful job creating a visceral experience, and it's important to experience that slavery, I think, in a deep and maybe visceral, maybe painful way, you know? And so, for me to be there and experience that gives me the opportunity to talk about it in a less sanitized way, a more real way, you know, a way that I think hopefully students can connect to and understand the horrors of slavery. That's my hope. And also, as the superintendent, the President also mentioned, Kwame Nkrumah, he was a seminal figure in African history, the first president of Ghana, and the father of the decolonization movement in Africa. And we got to go to the museum and mausoleum there, and I got to learn a lot more about him on a more personal level as well. But I think beyond just my AP class, there are lessons here for Gen Ed classes. I teach, this year, US history, I've taught world history. We discussed in the National Museum, the trans-heron trade, which is an essential concept in the Missouri curriculum for world history. Obviously, the Atlantic slave trade in great detail, and neocolonialism and globalization. These are all topics that are explicitly mentioned many times in DESI social studies standards across many, all of the social studies classes, really. And then beyond that, too, there was a lot of incredible geography that I experienced there, talking about development, private industry versus the state, the physical, just the physical geography of Africa. These are all essential concepts to social studies that appear in all of our courses, and I look forward to sharing in more detail with my department and with other teachers at Ruskin, some of what I learned. And, yeah, I'd like to, you know, just say thanks again. It was a really incredible opportunity. I tried to make the most of it, and it's impactful, really impact my teaching, so, thank you. Oh, yes. I'm so sorry. Mike Ross, teach US history and AP African-American studies at Ruskin.
Yeah, let me just say that... Let me just say that it was, it was a pleasure having our staff there, in particular, someone who actually teaches African studies, 'cause the level of appreciation, I could see it in your eyes when you saw all the things. I'll share with you a couple of comments that I heard Mr. Ross say. He was so giddy at one point, we were at one of the sites, and he was like, "I've seen this in textbooks, but I've never seen it." And then his comment saying was, "This is a slide, this is a slide, this is a slide." So, it warmed my heart to see the excitement that you had about the learning of the history and the culture that you could bring back to our students in an authentic way that you've been there. So, thank you for being a great recipient, a learner, and a scholar on that trip and being part of our group in that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
The next two slides are from Mackenzie Britt, who was unable to be here. We did have three students to go with us, Mackenzie Britt and Cam Ward are also the students who went, but they're not able to be here this evening. But when she did do her slide, she really talked about seeing it from a female perspective, being on this trip and seeing how important that was in this society, speaking of the queen mother and those experiences, and being, standing up in front of, with the mirror of Accra. She did talk a lot about how important that was to her and how important that made her feel. So, unfortunately, she's not here to talk about her two slides, but we do have Mr. Jaden Eponti here, and he will be able to share his experience.
Hello, all. My name is Jaden Eponti, and I'm a student that goes to Ruskin High School. This trip to Ghana has been... This trip to Ghana has been a very humbling trip indeed. It has been very, very, hmm, I would say life-changing. To know a different culture, to know a different perspective, to know a different environment from the one you've been raised in all your life. I would say, as a black man going to Ghana, it was a very beautiful country that I saw. As you can see on the screen, you have lots of beautiful greenery and flora there. And it was just, it was an experience that I could feel my ancestors were really connected to. Like, they really did this for a living and stayed in this part of the world. And I think that was very surreal to me, as I've never pictured it from that perspective, that this used to be my home before, you know, slavery and colonization happened by the Europeans to take and separate our people. Next slide, please. I said that the trip really changed me. When I went to the museums, I saw Kwame Nkrumah, and I saw his legacy. I saw his vision for Pan-Africanism, and I was very inspired by that. I was thinking, man, this guy, he just knew what he wanted, and he fought all his life for one movement to really change a continent, to really change a people, to lead a people back to grace and to sovereignty. I'll talk about his wife and how he married an Egyptian woman to further solidify Pan-Africanism by essentially getting Egypt in his bloodline, which is symbolically, or I guess literally, uniting the Arab and Sub-Saharan worlds of Africa, as they are two different distinctive regions of Africa that not all of them agree to be, you know, distinctly African. Next slide, please. As a young man, it was very thrilling for me to be in a different country from America. I met the local king of a village, and it was a very, it was very nice. I never met someone of that stature before, and it was very, just very humbling. I don't know what to say about that. It was pretty cool. But I saw the zoos, and I saw all the things that were accommodated for us. And I thought it was very nice for the Board to, you know, let us have this trip, as this is a once-in-a-lifetime trip. And I think when I came back, and all the teachers told me that, I really felt it even more, that I was privileged enough to go on this trip. I feel like I will relay my experiences to my contemporaries, and we will try and have a better understanding of a continent that was, that's history has been corrupted and ignored for the better part of millennia. Yep, that's it for me.
Ladies and gentlemen, Jaden Eponti, I would say that Jaden really walked with stride through the whole trip. He really took it in and experienced. At the same time, Jaden was with a group that they missed their flight. Well, they didn't miss the flight, the plane left without them from New York to Ghana. And they had to go to Brussels, rerouted and back. And I was commenting to the kids, "Oh, my goodness, how fortunate are you for your first out-of-country flight to go to three continents in 24 hours?" And Jaden embraced it, because not only did they miss the flight, but they had lost their luggage. So they spent several days without their clothes. But in true African fashion, everyone chipped in, gave Jaden a T-shirt, gave him some shorts, and he survived. But I still remember the smile on his face when he got his luggage, he got his own clothes. So kudos to you, Jaden, for handling that in very adult fashion. And I'm glad to hear the words that you said, "life-changing", because that is the impact we're trying to do for our kids here, is to have experiences that creates opportunities for you in the future. And I know that you're going to do great things, so we're going to be watching for you.
And Jaden, could you, Jaden, could you tell us your African name?
I was Kristin, the name, Kwaku Yamache. It means gift from God.
You better believe it.
That is our presentation from Ruskin. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Obeng and the Board for sanctioning this trip. It is a life-changing experience, and it is very important for our students to get out and see this. Other school districts are more privileged to be able to go and do this. And I'm glad that Ruskin and Hickman Mill School District is able to say, hey, we belong in that arena as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Dr. Fields, my question to all of you is this. In the humbling experience from looking at what our culture is in the democracy piece and being firsthand, to be close to the king, how did that make you feel? To feel, because for me, it makes you feel empowered, that you're worth something, you know? You have your own worth and integrity, but to be there, how did that feel?
You know, I sit there and I think about Sidney Poitier, who spoke about, he was told that he would be able to walk and talk with kings. That was one of the things that he mentioned, and that he was able to do that. And I wish my father was here so that he could see that I had that opportunity. And I'm just a simple guy. And for me to be in that arena, I mean, it was so humbling. I walked out of there thinking, who would ever believe that I would be here shaking the hand of a king?
Of course, Kwesi Obachi. Thank you. We are going to have a chance to have some comments from Board members, but we do have some other delegates from our trip. I would ask Ms. Wakisha Briggs to step in, if she wanted to make some comments and...
Well, I see she's crying already. First of all, they made it sound very elegant. And truly, it was amazing and an experience. And I've been thinking about what I would say as I come to this boardroom. But first, I'm going to start as just being an original woman who's very clear on where I come from. I come from...
Can you pull your mic up?
A bat, I come from a breed of amazing, strong individuals. And I look at Mr. Townsend, I look at Banay Mims, Anne Coleman, Irene Kendricks, Ms. Hicks, Beth Berger, and Yow. I stand here today, my name is Afia Sikapa. My name stands for treasure. But before I was Afia Sikapa, my real name is Wakita, which stands for everlasting sunshine. So when you guys blessed the New World Learning Center, and you guys came in with the blessing of the building with Sage, I felt welcomed and at home first. That was the first time in this district that I felt welcome. Because part of who I am is from, I'm a descendant of Indians as well. And what I learnt while we were on this journey is that Indians were one of the first slaves. But they wasn't built to do the job. So the master plan turned around, and so they used the people from Africa to do the job. It was a very tough job. Dr. Fields, he may have, the room was not this big. It was probably the size of three utility closets where they kept our people. I can still smell the stench of that room. I can still feel the sensation underneath my foot, underneath my tennis shoes. I can still feel the sweat dropping down and dripping down the crack of my back. Even if it was just for 15 minutes. Now, y'all know me, I can't sit still that long, so I was disappearing left and right. Once you see me here, now I'm gone. I mean, I was disappearing, because my body can only take so much. I felt the voices of my ancestors. I always wondered why and why I'm the way I am. Who's talking to me? Why do I have to stand up straight? Why do I have to advocate for individual? Because someone stood for me first. Why should I serve? I have an obligation to serve. Thank you, Ms. Mims, for all your dedicated years of service. I can't even imagine what you had to go through, but I can. Thank you, Ms. Irene, for affording us, President Irene, the opportunity to go on an amazing experience. And trust me, I've traveled to a bunch of fine places, but none like this. And what people don't know is I was part of being instrumental in the work of making China such a city of Kansas City, Missouri. But I do want to tell you that my life has changed tremendously, and I'm still seeking and searching for what this trip has done for me. Me and my siblings always talk about where we come from. Now I'm able, with all the degrees that I have, I'm able to communicate to my siblings, my nieces and nephew, who we are and what we stand for and who we belong to. That's powerful. I can't imagine, I remember standing at the Atlantic Ocean with Mackenzie and Ms. Irene, generations standing side by side, having a simple conversation that we never dreamed that we would be standing next to each other. That was just a few weeks ago. We never dreamed that we would even be there. But I can't, I would be remiss to say that it was such a pleasure to support and stand in the great company of our Mayor Protem Raina Parkshaw. I got the chance to look and witness a woman in front of me that I could touch. She wasn't an illusion, she was a real thing. Create pathways of success, not just for Hickman Mill School District, but for our city and our country at the speed of light. Those of you who were on the trip, you know what I'm talking about. She did it with such grace and mercy and eloquence. And so as I think about what's going on in the people in this room, I'm so excited, Yow Bing and the Board of Education. I can't wait to see where you guys are going next. Because please sign me up. I hope that we could go to visit another continent of some sort. I mean, you know, to see how other people and other cultures are living. But on behalf of myself and my family and all the women, and I do have to stop with Anne Coleman, too, because what people don't know is that it took a lot of women to get me where I am today. And me and Anne don't talk very much, but she is instrumental in a woman who pays it forward for me every day, who gave, who helped me become a dreamer. I would like to say to Mrs. Fields right there, that the bracelet that her daughter gave me, I think eight years ago, I still wear it today to important meetings. Because there are women and girls that are still dreaming today. And this was a dream to come true for myself, and I'm still processing it. I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve. I thank you for the opportunity to have a voice here today. And I thank you for the amazing opportunity to continue to dream big. I'll keep you posted. And thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
I'll have Mayor Protem was a delegate on our trip as well, too, and another excellent example of women. And I know that, I think it was Dr. Fields or maybe Jaden talked about in the Ashanti culture, it's a matriarchal lineage, right? So inheritance is done in nature, and women are, and you talked about the headwoman. She actually had enough power to dethrone kings. They crowned the kings. And so it was great to be among some great women to see that played forward. And to have our Mayor Protem with us was truly a privilege and an honor to have that experience. So, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Madam President and School Board members and all of those assembled here. I am Kansas City Mayor Protem Raina Parkshaw and a proud graduate of Ruskin High School. It was such an honor for me on this trip and, you know, representing our city, but also being a representative of this school district. When I graduated from Ruskin a few years ago, didn't have the opportunity to take, to have this type of experience. And I think what I'm most excited about is it was so transformational for me, and I know it was for those students, that I'm more excited for them because here I am in my 50s experiencing this, and they are experiencing this in their teenage years. And I can only imagine how beneficial this will be, not just for them, not just for this school, but for our city. They, first of all, they represented themselves so well. I was so proud to stand among them as we were experiencing those things. And they, and I mean, you know the students you have, because you've heard Jaden speak tonight. But they all were so well-mannered and, and I think, now, I've had opportunity as the Mayor Protem to take other trips, representing the city, as I've been establishing sister-city relationships. And, you know, I've been that delegate for the city. But what was really cool for me is going with educators. So now I'm going to have to bring educators with me all the time, because I learned so much from Mr. Ross and Dr. Fields. And of course, you as well, Superintendent Obeng. As they were educating the students, I was learning as well, things that I hadn't heard in my lifetime. And so it was really beneficial, I think, not just for the students, not just for the school district, but for our city. And I don't know that I officially thanked all of you, but I do want to thank you for serving as a delegate and representing Kansas City, because we did have an opportunity to talk with many dignitaries there and represent Kansas City in a manner that would allow us to hopefully be able to continue with additional exchanges. Of course, they talked about the student exchange, but we also are looking to establish a sister-city relationship in which Superintendent Obeng and I have already worked to establish a committee that will be working to have ongoing relationships and communication with the Ghana delegation there. And I think the other thing that I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about is the welcome that we received from Mayor Sayer, which is the first African woman to serve as mayor of Akraw. And she interrupted our speeches and said, you know what? Let's have all the women come and join together. And really uplifted all of us in that moment. And we took a fabulous picture, I think, with all of us, the student Mackenzie as well. And it was so powerful of a moment to be standing there with the first woman mayor of Akraw. And so I just want to thank and congratulate you School Board members and the President for creating this opportunity for the students, but then allowing others of us to join in the delegation, because you are transforming lives, you're transforming our city in doing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We started with a Ruskin student and ended with a Ruskin graduate. So how poetic to, it was a gift for me to have the opportunity to lead the delegation and sometimes in the organization, you said, is it really worth it? The amount of work it goes, but you know what? I would do it again. It was worth it tenfold. And to get the responses from our students and staff and our delegates, it was certainly impactful. I didn't realize how much it would affect me, which it did, having the experience of the group going through. So I want to thank everyone who was part of that, and appreciate that, and thank... And thank the, uh, Board President who was, uh, along the trip as well. Now we have many memories to share, but now it's a call of action, right? And one of the things that I know we talked about is this was a victory lap, right? When you go through this, the slave forts, it's very emotional in terms of what happened four hundred years ago. But at the same time, you have to look and say, okay, for many of us that were there, our ancestors were the ones that were enslaved and taken away. They did not even think, imagine that their future great, 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 great grandchild would come back and be so accomplished to have people who are principals, teachers, leaders, political leaders, presidents of boards. They would not even imagine. And the stories we heard were horrifying and just scary in terms of being in that situation. And to have that experience, um, was very powerful. And so I was very pleased to hear from many of our delegates that it was life-changing. So I say it was well worth the effort and priceless.
And, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, did you say what's your, uh, name?
I didn't say my name because I could barely pronounce it, but it's Afia Bafwa, which means philanthropist.
And then mine's was Ottawa Sachua, which means Monday's Child, uh, Warrior, uh, Go-Get-her. Uh, she named a whole bunch of stuff, but it was a very emotional experience to be, the experience, the renaming ceremony, to be welcomed back home and to be, to receive our African name. So it was very humbling, emotional, and this trip was, uh, definitely I would encourage anyone, if you have an opportunity to go to the motherland, please do because it's life-changing. And thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for sharing your stories with us. Thank you.
And by the way, I had an African name too, mine is Yao. Didn't change sometimes.
President Kendrick?
Yes, Director Brooks.
If I just might make a brief comment, please.
Yes, sir.
You can see why there are certain people in this nation that don't want those of us who are the descendants of enslaved people to know about themselves, where we came from. Jaden moved my heart, my very spirit in tears because of what he said, what he felt. And when I was in Senegal, West Africa, and went to this slave island, they called it Door of No Return. Jaden, I could two sense the presence of my ancestors coming down the Atlantic from the West African nations as slaves. And I can, I could feel the, the sense that the sharks were waiting for their food circling the island of Coret. I could sense when I went to the dungeons, I could almost tell the height and weight of my people because of the indentations on the wall. And I remember going to the Lou Church there, Lou. It's another name that doesn't come to mind. I'm in the hospital, but I'm not here for any mental condition. I, I could, I, a mission. And there was six, eighteen of us, you know, fat, fat and tripped with Senegal, Marlin, the Gambia after the drought in Sahara region of West Africa, studied the food and resources, studied the food and water resources. And, 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 and I, I know what Jaden felt because I felt it. And I felt it even how he felt it tonight. But somewhere, some way, if there's a God, and I believe there is, this nation of ours will never be great until it commits two cardinal sins. What it did to the indigenous people, took their land, sent them to Oklahoma to die from smallpox and alcohol, smallpox and alcoholism. And then brought over slaves, our ancestors, to tar and saw. You can get pretty rich if you don't have to pay, if you get free land and don't have to pay your workers. The staple singers have a song, "When do I get paid for the work I've done?" And all I'm saying is that, that I'm, 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 I pray every day and every night that some, that God will come in and step in and say, it's time that this world, this nation, the land, the free, the homeland, the ready, understand that it's committed to the most cardinal sins. Enslavement of people, all they wanted to do is be free in their homeland. And then take from the land of those. When Columbus discovered America in fourteen ninety-two, that was bigger lie than chicken, little though. He got lost. The Native Americans found him. But we celebrate, isn't it? This September, I think, they re-celebrate. All I'm saying is that I hope we as an education institution, and I applaud the Board, the Superintendent and all those that were able to make this journey. I hope it'll be expanded. But as important as that, since all of us can't go to Africa, that at least it could be taught with the possibility of federal funds being withdrawn. Thank you. I, I, I'm sorry I went off on you, but it doesn't seem like I'm ill, does it? Imagine what I'd be saying if I wasn't ill here in the hospital? God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you. Any other board comments? Okay.
I wanted to say to Mayor Pro Tem, it's the first time I've seen you without heels and watching you walk through that door very humbly this evening, but you walked in with a lot of power. Is that the surge that you got? And it's a different feeling when you come back home and you get to see what your worth is as a woman and then where you walk with it now. I've been to Africa, so I can tell you what it's like and, and enjoy. But it was the sadness, that the realization, and because a lot of it, we didn't get to, we got to college of what all took place. But when I watched you and then I saw Wakisha, y'all came in. It's a whole different genre with you. How do you feel?
Transformed.
There you go. And it helps you in your walk, don't it?
I want to thank everyone for sharing your experience. And I can't quite explain it to you guys, but when you guys, looking at the pictures and hearing your stories, it's hard to explain. I have this feeling in my body and I, I, I don't know what's happening. I can't explain it, but at the same time, it's beautiful. So I want to thank you guys for going and experiencing that and coming back and sharing it with us. So thank you.
Watching you today when you were smiling and what did you say to me? I'm, I'm gonna be speaking tonight and watched you full of joy. I just want to say thank you for bringing that back, but that's always been you. But today was a little bit different because you made me go, mm. I just want to share that with you.
The young man, JD, is that what? Jaden, sorry. You talked about the women. I just want to know since when you came back, did you look at the women in your life in a different way?
I've always had immense amount of respect for a woman I know, especially my mother. Um, so to be very blunt, I cannot really say that my view has changed because I've always revered women since I was very little, as I was raised by them. But the appreciation is even more profound now as I've seen in the cultures of Africa, cultures of our ancestors, that woman appreciation was number one. We are one of the only societies, uh, in world history to ever have a matrilineal royalty descent. So, um, yes, I, my experience is profound and my respect for women is also very profound.
Thank you.
Jaden calls mom every night.
Good for you.
Any other comments?
I'll just hope.
We all have some time, we go ahead.
Hit your mic though, hit your mic. There you go.
I, um, I'm a lifelong learner and I watch a lot of documentaries. And just some of the pictures that, that, that come up, you know, from the, when Mr. O'Beane went out, went for your aunt. To this trip, just, it just reinforces some of the stuff that I see in documentaries. I mean, it's, it connects everything all together. And it, it, it's just a privilege for me to continue learning through some of the stuff that you guys have experienced. So, uh, in that aspect, I love it, I love it. And Mr. Fields and I, we talked at a bad football game about students traveling. How we both, we both believe that students should travel. They should not just stay here in the metropolitan area. Whether, you know, it's to the East Coast, West Coast, that they should see other places in order to form educated opinions about, you know, different things in life. And this, you know, this is one of the trips that helps, helps do the, help do one of the things that I believe in, um, believe in as far as developing a person, a whole person, it, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will, in the interest of time, I'll bring this to a close. Um, and I'll say, meaning that I'm so grateful and thank you for all your contributions. With that, and with that, Madam Chair, I'm gonna move, uh, quickly because I know we, we had some students waiting and some of them had to go. But we do have a, um, I want to, I want to move to our Above and Beyond Award because I want some of our students to witness this as well too. And we do an Above and Beyond Award, um, pretty much almost every month. And it's usually, um, for students and we get to give them some money and things like that. But once in a while, we do community as well too. And today, um, we are, uh, giving an award to two distinguished, uh, community members who've been long-serving. And I want to start by just reading a bit of a caption, uh, from each. And so I'll ask, uh, maybe Mark Sharp to come to the podium. Because the first person I'd like to, uh, share information about and honor is John Sharp. So, um, for many residents in South Kansas City, it's hard to even imagine a time when John Sharp was not involved in the community. For over thirty years, John Sharp has been a strong advocate for justice, safety, and empowerment of our community. He has not only lived in South Kansas City, but has served in many positions, capacities such as State Representative, ran for Senator, Hickman Mills School Board, became Kansas City Council, Fifth District, and during redistricting, Sixth District, served on several boards, on and on and on. John Sharp helped serve on the community board to get the land purchased to build the splash park and the pool called The Bay. Most of you have seen that. He also helped establish the South Kansas City Alliance Community Organization, where he continues to chair, um, to chair as the, as a chair for the Hickman Mills Foundation as well, consistently raising funds to help support students with scholarships and funding. The commitment to offer a balanced and fair perspective of our school district while applauding the efforts of our students and staff was a welcome reprieve in his many articles published in the Martin City Telegraph. In South Kansas City, his commitment to service and making a stand often difficult decisions has contributed to the long-term growth of the Hickman Mills School District. So therefore, it is a great pleasure on behalf of the school district and the school board, I'd like to, uh, present Above and Beyond Award to Mr. John Sharp. And unfortunately, both of our honorees today are in the hospital. But fortunately, we have some surrogates here and I know that, uh, Mark Sharp is here on, on behalf of his father. And I'd like to present this to, uh, Mr. Sharp, Junior.
Should I come around?
Yes, please come around.
Uh, good evening. I'll, I'll be brief. I'm State Representative Mark Sharp, uh, on behalf of my father. Uh, I would like, would like to thank Superintendent O'Beane, Madam President Irene Kendrick and the rest of the Hickman Mills School Board. Uh, my father moved here back in nineteen sixty-seven, fifty-seven years ago to the Hickman Mills School District area, uh, and this, uh, means a lot to him. So, um, obviously he's in the hospital recovering from a, uh, hip surgery replacement. Uh, so he's, uh, he can't be here tonight, but he definitely, uh, sends his warm wishes and his regards. Thank you.
And I'll ask Mr. Sharp to stick around a little bit because we have some, um, other information we want to share as well too. But I do want to get to our other, um, honoree, which is Mr. Alvin Brooks, the Honorable Alvin Brooks. Mr. Brooks, are you there? Can you hear me?
Uh, no, I can't, I'm here, but I can't hear you. Go ahead, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I can only think of one person currently residing in Kansas City, considered a living legend with over seventy years of community service to back it up. And that man is more, is none other than Alvin Brooks. As a young man from humble beginnings in Arkansas, his passion for service eventually led him to Hickman Mills School District. After several years in law enforcement, officer, director, detective, and later Mayor Pro Tem, in two thousand and ten, he was appointed to the Kansas City Police Department's Board of Police Commissioners. Furthering the call to service, he resigned from the police department and became elected as a director on the Hickman Mills School Board. During his non-consecutive terms on the school board from twenty seventeen to now, he has helped make decisions that would further shape the district's future, such as a tough decision to close schools. At that time, that was not a popular decision. However, his wisdom and resolve took, vision and resolve to look at the long-term fiscal impact on the district and plan ahead for the future, where the district would once again be positioned for sustainable growth, directly influence how we are better prepared today. And you sit in a space of that was allowed because of those decisions previously. Brooks was recently honored with the two thousand, um, twenty-four Paul Morris Community Service Award by the Future Builders Foundation at the MSBA Annual Conference for our school district. Mr. Brooks demonstrates a lifelong dedication to public service, community safety, and educational equity. Let us all, let us all become better in Hickman Mills, seeking to learn from his extraordinary resilience and dedication. Therefore, it is with great honor that on behalf of the Hickman Mills School District and Board, I present this award to Mr. Alvin Brooks for being above and beyond. And we have, uh, Mr. Brooks's, uh, surrogate here to accept all that you have.
No, no, no.
Well, I don't speak though.
You can, you can feel it stopping from speaking, right?
I'll be out tonight, baby.
Uh, Mr. Brooks, the floor is yours as usual.
Well, I think maybe I've, uh, said as much as needs to be said, uh, with my remarks earlier, but thank you so much, uh, Superintendent O'Beane and members of the Board and administrators and for this honor. for this honor. I couldn't think of a better person. And, um, my comrade, John Sharp, who, uh, been working with, I think, uh, almost since he came to this area. I know when I was, uh, even as a city councilman, I was assistant city manager and city governor. So congratulations, John Sharp, for, um, I hope you're watching also. It's good to be co-person's honor this, this biggest award. So thank you. And we don't do these things for selfish reasons. We don't do it to way the trails on four, five, nine, or forty-one with the cancer to call, the star, the globe, voice, any, any other. We do it because it's a feeling that we had, that have, that we wanna help somebody. And that's been my journey. And God has helped me to do those kind of things. And again, I have to thank my late wife, Carol, who I'm sure that if it wasn't for her, all these things would not have happened. She was serving. That went under my wing, and she's the one that said, you take care of the community, and I'll take care of the kids. She did a better job than I did, but I tried. Thank you so very much. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I do have a recommendation for the board, though, so, um, those of you who are exiting, don't.
Mr. Obeng, did I tell you that was my grandson, my godson before that? They were glad that I was able to.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Briggs.
Briggs, could you say?
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. That was my grandson Damon Brooks. And my godson, Saint Jermain Reed, who was there, and they were glad that I was able to say something, because they were debating who's gonna flip the coin to say something.
Well, they both quickly just pointed at you, so. They know, they know the deal. But I do have a recommendation I want the board to consider. Um, considering the distinguished contribution of these two individuals, Alvin Brooks and John Sharp, I recommend that the board waive policy FFF and any rules and refer the naming of our newly, uh, new early education program to John Sharp Early Education Center and our new middle school as Alvin Brooks Middle School, in that the board refer the recommendation to the community engagement committee for validation and return to the January board meeting. Madam President.
I seek a motion, uh.
I motion.
You support that?
I motion to support that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Hicks.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Mims?
Of course.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Absent.
Mr. Brooks?
Abstained. But I will vote for John Sharp.
It's been moved in second and, uh, pass five, zero.
Uh, Mr. Madam Chair?
Director.
I just wanted to say to Mark, State Representative, I was just sharing that it's more than thirty years, it's been fifty years with your dad. And that's, that's my battle, back and forth, as you already know, but I'm well deserving of him and, uh, of both of them for tonight. But please let him know sharply that I was there.
Madam Chair, we do have some student recognitions, but I would ask if we could have a five-minute recess to have an opportunity to thank our guests that arrived for the first two items.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna recess for five minutes.
It's just amazing, I can't wait.
Thanks, sir.
You know what? I'm sitting there looking at you, and I thought, I know that man! But I cannot.
Uh, board members, if we can, uh, head back to our station, please. Okay, board members, if we can, uh, head back to our station, please. You know, I did. All right. Uh, oh, Byron, in the bathroom. What the fuck? Okay, Barney. Come on, come on, come on. I'm over here. I'm, I'm working tonight. I'm tired. I'm ready to go home. We will be resuming our meeting. Okay, we're moving on to.
Still superintendent comments?
Super, we still under superintendent.
Yeah, it's just a long comment. Uh, unfortunately, I know we lost some of our students. I know we, we lost some of our students, but we're gonna be sure to invite them back again. We're gonna go through the process, but I, I do want to take time to honor their contributions. And if you guys could start the slides, please. Um, so the, I think we're starting with the math relays. We have, uh, some staff here. Come on up. You can advance the slides. Keep going till you get to, keep going till you get to math relay. Keep going. All right. Go ahead, you go ahead.
How's it going? Uh, so, yeah, uh, I'm Josh Fellers. I was, uh, hired this year, uh, to be the honors math for Hickmanville South. And, uh, I was told that our kids absolutely loved the idea of doing math relays. And they had actually brought it up to me before I had even heard, heard about it from our admin, so. They, uh, were asking me, are we gonna be doing math relays? Are we gonna be doing this this year? And I said, I don't know, um, maybe. But, uh, then they brought it up to me. Um, Dr. Hawks brought it up, and then I was like, I guess we're doing it, so. I, I jumped right in. Uh, I think we got our team together. I got a couple of us here, a couple of our team. We took thirteen kids, um, to Grandview, and uh, long story short, they, they rocked it. I mean, our, our school district came back first place, so. I couldn't be prouder of them, and I don't wanna take credit for what's not mine, but I know that these kids wouldn't, since they knew about it before even I even did. We didn't have a lot of time to practice before. But they took with them what they already knew, and they showed the world what they knew. And they were very successful, and I couldn't be more proud of them. Or, or the other schools as well that were a part of it as well, 'cause all of our schools did very well. Um, so we brought Brandon and we brought Giovanni. Uh, Brianna, uh, Onslow was here a little bit ago, but she had to, to leave. She, uh, actually placed third in data. Correct? Data, so that's pretty awesome. And these two also finished top three, uh, in top two.
And he got one.
And one, one and two, first and second place, in geometry? ACT? And data, so, yeah. Very good job, guys. So, yeah, proud of them. Uh, they deserved to be up here. I'm happy they're getting noticed, and, yeah, that's about it, that's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you. What? The, uh, why don't you, uh, let's get the students up to the mic for a sec. I know you're mathematicians, not, uh, English lit people, but, uh, yes, introduce yourself, and then tell me a little bit about why you love mathematics.
Um, my name is Brandon Castro, and I've just always kinda been good at it, and I just found interest in it, something I'm good at, so I enjoy doing it. I just wanna see how, you know, just see how well I am at it.
So were you surprised that you won?
Yeah, actually, I didn't think I was going to. When, when they called up, like, right when they called me, I genuinely said to the person next to me that I didn't think I was gonna, I didn't think they were gonna call my aim, and they did.
And there you go, right? So you know, you're a winner.
Yeah.
Right? Good stuff.
My name's Giovanni Sanchez, and I like mathematics because people say I'm good at it. That's really all.
He's good at it.
Does your grade say you're good at it?
Not really.
Yeah, that's good. That means you're a genius level. You're beyond the grading scale.
Yes.
Right? That's the same thing I used to tell my father when he got my report card. Just don't worry about that, Mark, I'm genius level, that's right. All right. Dr. Hawks, did you wanna say anything before?
Well, um, I'm sad that more of them couldn't be here tonight, because it was pretty fantastic, and we had Mr. Fellers, Mr. Hart, um, our coach, Ms. Mannen, who volunteered their time on Saturday to be there and to work with the kids to prepare for math relays. And just their looks on their faces when they, you know, their names get called, and out of the whole city, you see Hickman Mills up there.
Yeah, right.
So, which was really cool. Yes, and, um, we did get to honor all of our math relays recipients and give them certificates and their medals at our family engagement event for November. And so they got to be recognized in front of all the families that came, about a hundred people.
Very good.
So, yeah.
The whole city, we had a whole team that was just.
We did, yeah.
All right, you guys came all the way here, we gotta at least take a picture.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I can't let you guys leave without a good math dad joke. All right, so, uh, why was ten so upset, guys? 'Cause seven, eight, nine. All right, um, next slide. Next slide, next slide. There we go, Lego League. Lego robotics.
So, I will, good evening, board, I'll do just a quick little intro. Uh, some of you got to witness first Lego League in action. So, thank you for your support. We hosted over five hundred students at Hickman Mills Middle School a couple of weekends ago. Uh, they called our event the Cadillac of all Lego League events. So, there are five schools that are chosen to be the host sites, and we were one of the five. Uh, we had outstanding participation from all of our elementary and middle schools. We have one team that is advancing to the final competition, uh, at Union Station in January. And then we had four teams who won specialty awards, um, for their core values, for their project, yes. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to these, uh, individuals and winners to share a little bit about who they are and what they accomplished.
And he's like, uh, I'm not supposed to talk.
Hello.
Hi.
Is that you in the picture?
Yeah.
All right, you look pretty excited and animated in that picture.
No. I was not ready for that picture.
All right, you know what, wait, 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 before you start, can you give him that trophy? That trophy he's holding there? And I want you to do the best you can to re- remake that photo, remake that photo. That, that, that face.
Can't do that.
My whole group left. These are different groups, uh, so I'm here. My name is Tevin, I'm in eighth grade, and I'm advancing to regionals.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what else to say.
You're back to regional, you don't have to say anything.
Yeah.
You're a champion. It's like, I'm good with that.
Uh, hello, my name is Sadie Thompson, I'm from the south team. I am the only one from my team who ended up showing up. My coach wasn't able to because his, he had some, something else that he had to do. Uh, my team sadly did not make it past regionals. We ended up getting eighteenth place out of, I think, forty teams.
Well, that's good.
That's good. First year.
First year.
This was the first year.
In my team, I was the team leader. Not all of our team managed to be able to, um, go to the competition, and that probably took us down a bit. But, uh, yeah, we worked hard, and we got as far as we could, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Congratulations.
That's impressive considering this was the first year for Hickman Mills South, and the first year to enter into place in the top twenty. That's, that's really good, out of all the schools in the region, so, that's impressive, so something to build on and feel good about that.
I'm eighth grade, this was also my first year, um, doing Lego League at all. My other team members have done it. Um, it was either their, like, first, second, or sometime, so, one of them or two of them were...
Right.
This was their third year doing it. Uh, but this was my first time, so...
Well, thank you for coming, and thank you for sticking around. So, we're gonna get a photo, so don't leave, but, uh, we'll have your teachers say a few words.
I'm Jeanette Caliputra, I'm the coach at, uh, Truman. And, um, we, we have three of the teams at our tournament from Hickman Mills that got awards. Um, one was an inclusion award because they had, um, several special ed students and, and things on their team that they included. Um, and so they won an award, I'm not sure what, um, Compass's award was for. And then Truman won the Rising All-Star Award. Uh, we did place thirteenth out of the forty-one teams in the robot game. And then we got the award for our, uh, project, and they, it's for everything altogether, but including our project, so...
Excellent, excellent. And we have your proud principal here, Ms., uh...
Yes, we do.
Oh, and Gold Ribbon School here, so, congratulations.
I just wanna say, we were there, we witnessed it, it was awesome. Yeah. And some of the things that they had those robots do was incredible. So, I wanna thank all the teachers, all the students, all the principals, everybody. It was awesome.
Yeah, I'll be impressed when you get those robots to clean my yard.
When I get it to do mine, I'll send it over.
For both of you, they, uh, they liked our schools, they liked the way the setup was, and they wanna bring it back next year and expand it even bigger.
That's right.
And if I can add, um, my brother is the head referee for the Kansas City area, he does all of the tournaments. Um, and he, he was impressed with the organization of it, and, like, they had, they bought banners for, you know, for, to tell people where to go, and everything was, every detail was, was taken care of. So, he was really impressed by that. He has not had that experience at a couple of the other tournaments so far this year. So, that's a big kudo to Hickman Mills.
Thank you for sharing that, and then Ms. Row did communicate that they did give us some huge kudos and want us to do it again. That's what happens when you do a good job, you get to do it again, you do more work, right? So, congratulations to, uh, Hickman Mills Middle School, who hosted it, and everybody else who participated in the, uh, development of it. But, we do need to get a photo with you, with you, so if you wanna come to the front.
Yep, congratulations again. You gonna photo bomb?
I think, I think, I think we need to get another picture where Ms. Mims up here.
No.
I know, I didn't, I wasn't there for yours, but for the other two, I was there, so, look on our Flickr account, and you'll see, especially... I know you took a picture of our team, so...
Oh, yeah, took tons of pictures. And I know I got some great pictures of you.
Oh, really? He's so shy. He doesn't look that shy in that picture.
No, he didn't.
He wasn't shy in that picture. All right, slide, please. Slide. All right, uh, oh, Teresa's not here. Oh, do you wanna speak on behalf?
Uh, so here about a month ago, uh, under the leadership of Ms. Teresa Tanner, our executive director of academic services, um, hosted a special education transition fair. So, this was the second year, um, that this event has happened. It was, um, an open invitation to all pre-K through twelfth grade students and their families who receive, um, some level of special education, five oh four, uh, support. It was held over in the newly renovated Burke Elementary Library in that beautiful new space. So, thank you, board, for your support of that. Um, you have a few pictures up there, it was, it was an awesome night. I was really in awe of all of the expertise in one room. I was a little bit threatened by it, no, I'm kidding. Um, it was really awesome, uh, there was a, an area for kids to hang out and play with adults and be distracted so that their families and guardians and parents could go get information from various resources. Um, so process coordinators, speech language pathologist, um, Missouri vocational rehab was there, just lots of different things. Um, they served pizza and had a four hundred percent, uh, increase in, uh, in, uh, attendance this year over last year. So, I was there for about forty-five minutes, and, um, I easily saw thirty families come in and out the doors just during that timeframe, so, lots of great stuff.
Thank you, I, I didn't get a chance to attend that event too, and they was very well subscribed. And it was great to have that new space for them to, uh, get there. And I bought a bracelet from the, uh, the group from Ruskin, and, uh, I was really impressed with their, with their work there. So, it's good, I'm glad our staff were able to put that on, and we had a lot of community partners that contributed and a lot of good feedback I've received from them. So, please send our kudos back to all the staff that, uh, and the students too, the students staffed all the stations, so... Next slide. And the last, we've, we've had so many great events that I didn't wanna leave any, anything off. We actually did leave some things off. But I do wanted to acknowledge, uh, we had this great event partnership with the Mid-Continent Library, Blue Ridge Library, uh, that we started this initiative, and we have, uh, two schools, and you, you can see in the photographs there, it was well subscribed. It's sort of like, kind of fits with our Around the Globe theme, there's like a passport thing they're doing throughout the next couple of months. It's competition, they have to get certain things. And this kickoff, they had to come to the library, and they had to find different things in the library. There's lots of snacks, mascots, and, uh, we had, there's a lineup of parents with their kids getting their first library cards.
Yeah.
Right, so that was great to see that partnership. Uh, Mr. Little, who is the manager of, uh, the Blue Ridge, um, says some dad did broke records for, um, attendance that night. They never had so many people in the library at one time during the week, it was a Wednesday night or something like that. And so, he's reporting back to his board the partnership he's having with our district. And, uh, so, too bad, um, Dr. Edwards is not here, but I wanna give her some kudos 'cause, um, she led that with a, a team to develop that, uh, initiative. But, we'll share the results in, I think, two months, see which, which, which school wins the competition. And then we're hoping we're gonna get to expand it with other libraries and other schools as well too, so...
Director Mims?
Dr. Obin, I wanna thank you for doing that partnership, because they didn't think that we were serious about coming back, which we did it for years. But in the process, I want you to know I saw you there, 'cause I was in the back.
You did.
Yes, I did, I saw Mr. Rowe, so I just wanted to let y'all know, I, I got my eyes on both of you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Madam President, that concludes the superintendent's comments.
Okay. All right, then we'll be moving on to, uh, MSBA Board Policy Update. Thank you, Casey.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Um, tonight, um, this, this update is a second read, and so we're requesting action. Uh, the first read of policies were presented last month. Um, don't believe we received any questions or follow-up from the board. Um, as mentioned, uh, on the original memo for the first read, um, the majority of these, um, changes or updates to your board policy are recommended based on changes in legislation or statutes.
Director Mims? Do, do you wanna finish your presentation?
No, that, that's fine, yeah.
It's been moved in second. Uh, Ms. Hicks, if you can do a roll call?
Ms. Mims?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Pass six oh.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, one of the iss, uh, one of the, um... Matters is Union Point. Um, Brandon Wright would have liked to have this brought up for discussion. Our Union Point is a historical building. Uh, we would like to, uh, if you could bring it up, there we go.
Okay. There we go. Uh, Mr. Robinson, I sent you a photo from Mr. Wright, are you gonna be able to put that up? Yeah. If you can, quickly. We see that, uh, Mr. Wright has, uh, sort of brought our attention to this issue of Union Point, but I'm gonna talk about it. He also sent this graphic today.
Yes.
He's absent from the meeting because he is there supporting his family, his new family.
Yeah.
So, Grace Lynn Wright, brand new potential student, keeping on roaming up.
That's right. All right, congratulations. Congratulations to him and his wife.
Look at that cutie, sleeping, wow.
Yeah.
All right, okay, you can go back to the, uh, graphics now. The, um, uh, Madam President, the, uh, Mr. Wright did want us to have some discussion on the, um, Union Point. And I know that their, uh, community's looking at this, and Mr. Robinson, a few weeks ago, went out to Union Point, uh, with some community groups to look at the building. You can scroll the graphics up a little bit so you can, they can see the different pictures. Um, Union Point was an old building, school building for Hickman Mills. Um, last year, uh, we actually had to do some work on it. We, uh, had to cut the grass, and we painted the walls and things like that. But it's been sitting for many years, unused, and, uh, there's a lot of people who are interested in finding some sort of, uh, use, uh, for this building. So, we brought it to the board for discussion to consider if this is something that they wanted, um, staff to pursue and to investigate around this. It's, it's not something we've had conversations in our strategic plannings or retreats. But, um, I've always been working with the, uh, Historic Society and the Santa Fe Trail people around some of our historic sites and things like that. And I think it'd be a good addition to look at how we can incorporate this into the historic history of Hickman Mills, and this is one of it. So, uh, open for discussions or recommendations from board members.
Madam President?
Director Berger?
Um, considering the historic nature of Hickman Mills as the CSD number one in the state of Missouri, we asked the superintendent to do a review of Union Point's school building in order to develop a plan for restoration utilizing grants and partnerships, and to update the board on potential options at the March Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Hicks, could you do?
Question?
A discussion? Yes, sir.
How old is the building? When was it, uh, constructed?
I don't know, long time ago.
Before you.
So was I.
We thought, we thought, weren't you in fourth grade then? I, I couldn't tell you that, uh, we'd have to do some research on that.
Okay.
Oh, Ms. 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 Mims has the history on that.
You go back a little bit, and that was one of the first schools that we had out here. So, you're gonna look back about the fifties, latter fifties, early sixties with that building, and all these years, we never had the money to do the renovation to it, and so, it, it's been left. And it was another one up there too that was a one school room, but I think, didn't it get tore down now? But this one here was the only one that was left. And so, yeah, you're looking at that, about that old. And if you want me to, I can go back, I, I've been going through my records and finding a lot of stuff, but I'm trying to get rid of, okay. But that's one of them.
Madam President? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
The reason I asked the question, whether or not it would be eligible for federal register?
Yes, it is.
A federal designation where we can get some possible federal fund. But, I don't know, I forget what, how many years something has to be standing for you to get that, but I'm sure that, uh, it can be found out.
So, you, you, sorry, did you say federal register? 'Cause we can investigate that in our review. So, Mr. Robinson's taking notes right now, so...
Right, Madam President. And recently, I took, um, Mario Vasquez from City Planning on a tour of Hickman Mills, and he pointed out that there is now state money, um, to be used for historic restoration as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, vote pass, no, do we call for the vote?
No, you haven't, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Hicks, if you can?
Ms., uh, Ms. Mims? Yes.
Uh, Beth, in second.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Pass six oh.
Pass six oh. All right, thank you, board.
Uh, Madam President, can we take a quick recess while we transition to the legal, uh, interviews?
Okay.
Okay.
If we could take a two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Don't want nobody to run off. Yeah.
All right. We're almost there. We're almost there.
I know, but I haven't seen you from ever.
Yeah, and while you were gone, I got.
No, there's a bucket.
Laying in my bed.
Oh, my gosh. Well, yeah, let's just go do lunch or something. So you didn't do any work in it? How those babies doing?
They're doing great.
Are you gonna see them for their holidays?
My grandson, he's in special ed and on his test. He blew out the charts. And Ricky, I'm just really impressed. Because he changed the life.
Oh, eighteen sixty-nine. Wow. We might have some, we might have some.
We definitely qualified.
Yeah, yeah. It was a sixty C F I.
Definitely on in there in the vault, down there in the first.
Oh, wow.
And to be that old, this ain't pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Little Housewives.
Through all the wind, the snow and everything else.
Like Little House.
That'd be great to get some big grant for that.
Yeah, I'm sure we qualified.
Anyways, you were saying he scored.
He did. He did.
That's what happens sometimes in special ed. You're on that spectrum. You can't only identify once you dig deep enough.
He wants the box.
I want the box?
He wants the box.
Yeah, that's gonna match up his brain?
I say, he gonna get punched in his face.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, I'm done boxing now.
Yeah. Prove there's some leaves off left. Green beans.
We love winter. So, but you do sleep in late? Yeah.
Stay up.
Stay up late, sleep in late.
All right, okay.
We do a dog bagger.
Townsend, where'd you get that food?
It's in there on the counter next to the right.
So, yeah, it's on the end. But um I put some, but I'm not gonna work all January, all February. I'll probably go back in the morning.
Some of that used to. Used to eat at seven in the morning. And then after seven, yeah. So I'm working to have a chance. I got eastbound five. Maybe you'll get. So I'm fasting for like sixteen hours.
Just do what you want to do. If you don't feel like doing nothing, just do nothing.
That's two minutes. Found it. I'm afraid they're hiding in front of you. I know for it, so.
No, I know.
Being there.
He's managing the uh process. Is it his thing all the way?
It must've been powerful to guess.
Oh, so so. Oh, you have like what you named going down there too?
We broke down in two years.
Yeah, I've um.
We had great tour guide.
All the candidates be down there.
And I mean, they told history, telling the story is like a risk and it just made you.
Yeah. Well, that's what.
The only experience. But not the only, but my I went with my parents to Jamaica, Haiti, Nassau. But Haiti never liked me, never. We went in the hills and saw the people in their tin checks and the.
We're down.
It was so. And and after it's like this, you could, it'd be a big nice house. And then you see the village and it's your hood houses and stuff like that. I know, and it just is so sad. But it was powerful.
The strawberries.
I was still no big. I did get sick. Oh, did you? Yes, really bad. My daughter was like. Oh, my God. Did you have a cold? No, I have a fever. It it hit me. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was I was in bed for like four days. Oh, my goodness. So, um. Yeah.
Because we're supposed to start like thirty minutes in a row.
Yep.
Is all the other pink winners?
I believe so. So I think Carla's up first, right?
Now, are we scoring?
Um.
How are we doing?
Uh we've got your questions in your packet. Questions in your packet. Again, uh we'll uh hold it over for a discussion and vote next month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, you can score each candidate as they speak over.
Okay. We have three?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, three. Yeah, three.
I don't know why I thought it was two.
Okay, so I think Carla is up.
Are you looking forward to kids being home?
No. Uh-uh.
I don't even know why I asked.
No, I'm not looking forward to them being home and eating the outer house and home.
Like, it's like seventeen days.
Right.
Our district doesn't. The kids go back at seven, the teachers go back at six.
Kids get an extra day. Okay, uh I think Mister Brook, I mean Mister Brooks.
Mister O'Beane.
Mister O'Beane. And then I think Carla's first. Yeah, I need to pee. What you got in your cup? Oh. You all right? Well, you still walking on your heels.
Huh?
You walking in them heels.
Not the ones that I'm walking like a woman.
Oh, well, he's there. I'm liking them heels and those now. I'm like, mm-mm, those little high heels I got are huge. We ready?
You can start when you want. You don't need.
Uh, well, Carla, uh.
She's gonna call her out when she when you're ready, so.
Okay.
You gotta get the eating back again.
Okay.
You guys get to look at the packages?
Now who? Which one? In I T? What man? Oh, I he's, I can't see him. That's why. I couldn't.
The Kansas City version of Scrooge. I mean, it was hilarious.
So the original.
Oh, Scrooge was there.
What I really did is I forgot my list.
Yes. One minor about, you know.
Yeah, I believe.
Okay.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready. Uh. We're gonna uh call the meeting back to order at eight twenty-two. Before we start, I I I'd like to uh make a statement. In accordance uh in consulting with uh my legal counsel, in accordance to the policy BBFA, I would like to make a statement of non-interest as defined in our in the policy. I hereby openly declare a degree of relationship through marriage to personal to a personal employee by one or more of the firm's candidates for the RFP process. I affirm that I hold no sub- substantial interest or financial gain in any other firms involved and can therefore perform my duties without prejudice or bias. Thank you. If we can call in the first candidate. Oh, uh board members, each of you have a uh question in your packet. Um you can go in order. Uh we'll go start with uh left to right to uh ask questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We don't have the questions. I do have a couple of my own, but I don't have the questions that that's been um delegated to to us.
Okay, um. Okay, Ms. Hicks is gonna email them to you now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Our first candidate is Carla Fields, Fields and Brown's uh law firm.
Is that your question right now?
Yeah, we gotta work that.
Yeah, we got a question. We got five questions. One, two, three, four. All right, thank you. Thank you, Carla, and thank you for being patient with us.
Sure.
Um I turn the floor over to you for your opening statement.
Okay, could you give me some parameters on how much time I have? What do I, what are the, what's the format?
Fifteen minutes.
Total.
Total. Total fifteen minutes.
So does that include your question time or?
Five questions we're gonna ask.
Okay, let me. So do you think I'm okay to take about ten minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um first, uh Board of Education, thank you so much for um allowing me the opportunity to both present to you this evening and to also have been of service to the district since twenty nineteen as your counsel. Um, you know, when I came here back in twenty nineteen and interviewed, I brought the whole staff and we did the presentation um with the PowerPoint and all of that. And I decided that um you all have had the opportunity to work for me, work with me for five years. So um rather than do that, I just kind of want to take a little bit of time to highlight some of the things that I feel like um our firm has done well and um talk a little bit about some of the things that I think um I would like to see improvement on should we be selected to move forward. Um if you're looking at my proposal on page that's number two, I kind of provide a list of some of the things that um are are part of the routine services that I provide. And so I want to highlight a few of those. And then I want to spend a little bit of time talking about um a few of those areas that I kind of want to highlight. Um certainly, we provide counsel and advice at all board meetings and have done so since twenty nineteen. Um we regularly review contracts entered into by the district. Um and I'm kind of skipping around. I've um defended district, the district in teacher complaints, including complaints under policy A C. Uh we've served as negotiator. I've served as negotiator for the district um in the HMNA negotiations since twenty nineteen. Um and I think we've had some successful uh negotiations that have resulted in um agreements that are favorable uh to the district. I have served, I've provided assistance with student discipline hearings when um needed. And one of the things that I don't have on here that um really took a lot of time was spearheading the superintendent search um in twenty twenty that resulted in Mister O'Beane's hiring. Um I was asked to, I was asked to um take the lead on working, on selecting, helping you all select the um search firm and um and kind of shepherding that entire process for the Board of Education. And I think um it resulted in some success. Um and also I have had the pleasure of defending the district in any and all due process hearings that we've had since twenty nineteen. Um that is something that the firm that had this before me um had another outside counsel due. Um I've handled due process um hearings for the district. Um and we've and nothing has actually resulted in a hearing. We've been able to resolve um any and all of those, both in favor, in in a way that was favorable to the district and um the parent. And so I feel really good about our success um in that space. I've served as issuer's counsel on um both of our bond deals since I've been on board. Um which essentially means that I'm representing the district in the bond deal. Um I've had experience um serving as bond counsel and underwriters' counsel. And so I'm familiar with and comfortable with um all that goes into um the issuance of bonds. And so um that includes reviewing all the bond documents, participating in the due diligence requirements, um and issuing opinions on behalf of the district. Um one of the things that I really want to spend a little time on um is our work in the area of TIF agreements. Um I have really tried to aggressively negotiate deals on behalf of the district. Um and the result of some of those deals have um included the retention of uh dollars on behalf of the district. Um I've not only negotiated that, but also negotiated um really good programmatic deals um for the district. And so I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about what that process looks like because um, you know, being from here, um growing up in South Kansas City, um I know the area. I know um the development lawyers. I know um my way around TIF, my my brother's general counsel for the TIF Commission, so that certainly helps. Um but it it each deal is a different process. And so um you know, I think that's something that kind of sets us apart. If I I believe that if Fields and Brown had been counsel when Cerner was negotiated, it would be a very different situation. Um for the price chopper deal, and I think Mister Brooks was the only person that was on the board at the time that we negotiated that.
I was on the board too.
Oh, that's right. You were on the board as well, um President Hicks. We were able to um there's not much margin, financial margin in grocery stores. And so we had to work hard to try and figure out how to get money back to the district in that. And so what we were able to do was um as I was going through that, I I determined that the city had a public participation class for class cash flow provision in that agreement. And it allowed me to be able to um negotiate some of those dollars back to the district. Um once profits reach. Once profits reach 7.7%, 50% of the money goes back to the district, to the city. And our goal was to try and negotiate 50% of that to come back to Hickman Mills. We were successful in negotiating 30%. And then in addition to that, we had received cash payments from the grocery store for, one, two, three, four, ten years. And then also a lot of programmatic benefits that included a community benefits agreement, food, a food bank, donations back to the district. And so there's a list of things that we were able to do. With the Glade Project, we were able to, I was able to negotiate back almost a half a million dollars in tax dollars back to the district as a result of that. And then also negotiated rent discounts for staff. And so that's something that I'm really proud of. Another thing that I'm really proud of is the work that we've done around litigation. When I came in, this district had three law firms representing them on insurance cases. We had a reputation in the legal community of, you know, giving, just file a claim and Hickman Mills was gonna pay money on these claims. One of the very first things that I did was I sat down with all three of those firms. I called them into my office and I said, "We're gonna, we're going down to one firm that I'm gonna refer insurance stuff to." And I want to really be aggressive about the defense of these cases. And so I work regularly with Paul Gordon. Just last week, he had a case dismissed because of some conversation that we had about not wanting to give counsel additional time to do their summary judgment motion. And so they ended up dismissing their case. We went from ten to twelve litigated cases to now we're down to two. And it's, people know now, the legal community knows now that you're not gonna be able to just come in and file a claim and get money out of Hickman Mills. You're gonna have to prosecute your case. You're gonna have to go to court. Gone are the days of sending these demand letters or, and getting negotiated deals out of these. And so something that I am very proud of. There are some things that I would surely like to see improvement in. I think certainly the politics have been difficult. And representing seven people that act as one is a challenge anyway. And, you know, there was a time that the seven board members, if they couldn't agree on anything, they could agree on me. And that has been difficult to see a change in that. Certainly, I want to see me being able to represent this board in the way that I can, that's best in the law. I've always felt like if I stick to that, no matter what the issues are, I'm gonna come down on the right side of them. And so I've tried to do that. Am I out of time?
Yes.
So I, you know, I wanna work to try and make that better. I think we've had some strong successes and some things that I'm incredibly proud of that I've been able to accomplish with the district. And I'm hoping to have the opportunity to do more.
Thank you. We have five minutes to ask questions. So starting from left to right, you should have your questions in front of you. Okay. Director Berger.
Shall we start with mine then?
Yes.
Okay. Please share a brief overview of your firm's experience and your connection to Kansas City and education systems, just a little more than what you had to do.
Sure. Fields &amp; Brown has been around since 1987. It was a firm that was started by my father and Charles Brown. When I was in high school, I have been with the firm since I graduated from law school in 95. There are, we have four attorneys. Three of us have been together since 95. And then Denise joined us in, oh, maybe 2011, 2029, 2009 maybe. We are a litigation firm. We are a certified minority-owned business and have been since our inception. We do a lot of insurance defense and employment defense. We have represented the, we've represented the Kansas City School District for, we did that for years as DSEC counsel, all the way up to the Supreme Court and back, down and then back up again. And so we've, you know, we've been around this space for some time.
Uh, Byron.
Okay, how do you or would you approach balancing legal compliance with practical needs?
Yeah, Mike.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, how would you or would you or would you approaching legal, balancing legal compliance with practical needs of the school board slash district? How do you or would you approach balancing legal compliance with practical needs of the school district?
It's always a challenge. You know, I do firmly believe, and I said this before, I do firmly believe that, you know, school districts are rooted in state statutes. And so if we're doing what we should be doing, we should be complying with the law. Like that shouldn't be, those shouldn't be in conflict. And so I, you know, I do recognize, and I've certainly had the experience of trying to balance the difficulties of seven people agreeing with balancing, balancing the law. I think that really has been the only, in the five years, that's been the only situation that I've had where I've had any difficulty at all balancing the law with, with the needs of the district. Those things go hand in hand. They should go hand in hand. And they generally do. I struggled with how to deal with the conflict of the six-person board for as long as we had it. That was a real difficult situation for me. And my approach generally is to, I spend a lot of time vetting things. That's important to me. I talk to other lawyers. I do research nationally. I consult MSBA. I, you know, I do try, and I think that sometimes it takes me longer to do things because I'm really spending a lot of time trying to make sure that I'm coming up with the right answer. And I haven't, in the five years, I don't recall a situation where anybody on the ELT has said, "Carla, you came up with the wrong answer." You know, this wasn't the right answer for doing this. I do know that, you know, half of the board felt like I was wrong with regard to my advice on the presidents and the co-president issue. I just, in that situation, I just felt like I needed to stay as close to the law as I could. I couldn't stand in front of you and advise you to do something that I thought was contrary to a statute. And so I just made the choice that that was what I needed to do. And I think that, you know, that's kind of how I, I'm conservative by nature when it comes to the practice of law. I'm liberal with everything else.
Sorry to cut you off, but we gotta move on to the next question.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
You're fine.
Give her five minutes. Right, Anne, if you could. And then if you could cut your statements down a little bit for time's sake, please. I guess I could. Thank you.
Boards often struggle with legal procedure and making educated decisions. How would you support the board in addressing procedure and legal dilemmas?
I mean, I think I've done that. I think for the last five years, I've done that. I would not say that that's an area that I struggle in. I'm here at all of your meetings and I help address. I'm very comfortable with Robert's rules. And so I'm comfortable with providing advice when asked. I always prefer questions in advance 'cause it does give me the time to vet them. But I've, I mean, I've been doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, did you, do you have a?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Go ahead. We can't hear you.
Can you, oh, you ever hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Is there anything, Ms. Paula, that if you were given the opportunity that you would do different than you have for the last five years? Any particular thing that you feel a little queasy about that if you had an opportunity that you would, you would, you'd do some differently?
Yeah, I think I would certainly navigate the politics a little bit different. I would, you know, I would, I would certainly try to, at some point in time, I felt like there was a view that I wasn't neutral, as much as I tried to be. I would certainly try and do that differently. I think, I think responding to things quicker would be something that I would say I would want to try and do better at if given the opportunity to do things better. I think my answers and my responses and my approach to litigation and my approach to negotiations, I wouldn't change anything about those. I think those have been successful and I think they've served the district incredibly well. I think you'd be hard-pressed to say that it didn't. But I do think that those things, you know, responsiveness, making sure that I get things done quicker, and figuring out how to balance the conflict issues that occasionally will arise when seven people are trying to agree on something.
Thank you. Director Mills, do you have a question? The question's on your statement.
Those questions, to me, she pretty much have answered for me. My thing is knowing, coming from a ten-board in the city to a, back to a seven-board, I admire the fact that you brought up being thorough. Being thorough takes time. So to make sure that you're given the right answer or given the legal responses to whatever the issues are, and I'm not an easy person to deal with. So my thing is, in dealing with someone like me takes time. What do you think?
I think it absolutely takes time to deal with. I mean, the thing is, you guys as directors have a huge responsibility and you're coming into it as lay individuals. And so I think that that always creates challenges. You know, in terms of advice, and I think that's part of why I'm really very conscious of the advice that I provide. Because I recognize that unlike my corporate clients, who are normally lawyers, you know, I'm now advising individuals who don't have the experience in the law but have a passion for what it is that they're doing. And so it is something that I'm very, very conscious of, the type of advice that I provide.
Thank you, thank you, Carla. The board will make a decision at our next board meeting. So thank you for taking the time to interview with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your work. Yes, sir.
Okay, we have to stick to our questions, please, for time. Okay, I'm just saying, next time, so we can be conscious of others' time, so we can be consistent with our questions. Okay. Thank you, Carla.
Would you stick to the questions that's on the line?
I can't.
I know she did.
You have five questions and six-person.
Yeah, I won't ask a question. I'll leave it up to the board.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Mills decided she will abstain from asking questions. All right. Who's next? We have Deion Green, DC Green Law. When are you good? Well, yeah, this evening you have been. You had your statements and questions. Not as many this time, so, yeah. Okay. Well, welcome, welcome.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
If you can, you will have ten minutes for your statement and then ten minutes for questions.
Okay, ten minutes for statement and ten minutes for questions. Shall my colleague sit or should we all stand?
However you like.
Okay. Sit to you guys.
If you'd like to have a seat or stand.
Well, first, thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity to be able to come before you and to talk a little bit about ourselves. It's, I know you've had a long evening, so we'll be as brief as what we possibly can. What I wanna do is just give you a little bit of an introduction just so you have a little bit of background information about us and the attorneys at this firm. Secondly, I just wanna briefly touch on the areas of focus of law that we have experience in. And then thirdly, I just wanna give you some information on what differentiates us from many other firms in the Kansas City area and even national firms. So first, my name is Deion Green and I am the owner of DC Green Law LLC. I went to Ruskin High School. Some of you may have, I don't know, I had extra copies, by the way, of the, there's, in case you missed it, there's a picture of me being a football star in Ruskin High School when I was there. And just so you know, one of my grade cards is in here too. I was in the top 10%. My wife, who is, I can, I did some of my lawyer talk on her and got her to join my firm a couple of years ago. She was actually valedictorian of Ruskin High School over twenty years ago. So we grew up in Kansas City, graduated from Ruskin. I went to UMKC, got a degree in economics. Then I went to law school in Indiana, which is a top-tier law school. And then I had the privilege to come back. I worked for a federal judge, Duane Bitten, who was the chief of the Missouri Supreme Court for several years. And then he was appointed by the President of the United States to be on the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. And I had the pleasure of working with him for a year. After that, I went to a firm called Armstrong Teasdale, which is now a national law firm. And I worked for them for twelve years, became a partner at Armstrong Teasdale. We defended, I defended a lot of, some of the biggest clients in the whole country, international clients, for about twelve years and became a partner. And about five years ago, I was able to establish our own small law firm, DC Green Law, to be able to, you know, help more smaller businesses and things of that nature. I'm joined by my colleagues, Alfred Jordan. Alfred is such a super- Alf, Alfred is such a superstar. He graduated from Hickman Mills High School, believe it or not. And then he went to Mizzou. He was magna cum laude. He was cream of the crop. And then he also worked for a national big law firm, Bryan Cave. You know, so both of us have worked, worked at very prestigious law firms for a number of years. He then did some work with the Jackson County Legislature. He's been responsible for budgets of over $300 million. He's very familiar with the, with local boards and things of that nature. And then we have Kristi Borders. Kristi is actually a former teacher, okay? And also a former investigator, and she still works with students, young girl, she's a guardian at Lytton. She, she does that pro bono. And all three of us are very pleased to be able to have this opportunity in front of you. So that's a little bit of background. Areas of focus, one area, school districts. My experience goes back to 2008, when I was defending Unified School District in Leavenworth, Kansas. A teacher actually sued the school and we defended that case and got a very, very good, good result. One of my biggest clients over the years has been Kansas City Public Schools. There was actually a national case that some of you probably seen in the news. There was a plaintiff, KWP, a seven-year-old got handcuffed in one of the schools. He was violating some of the school rules. He was creating a very difficult situation among students and teachers. And one of the police officers in the school had to get involved. And unfortunately, or fortunately, to protect the student, he put handcuffs on the student and took him to the office and the parents sued the school district. During this time, they had, you know, got the American Civil Liberties Union to help them with the case. And during that time, the ACLU had tons of money. And they sued the teacher, they sued the police officer, and then they also sued the school district. And I was lead counsel for the school district. This case had a lot of publicity. It was in the news nationally and we defended it and the school district won. We, the case actually went to the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals where I argued the case. And we got a very favorable decision coming down where the Court of Appeals essentially said that the school district wasn't liable and that it granted qualified immunity. There was another case I defended, McKim versus Kansas City Public Schools, that also went to trial, where you had a teacher who worked there for over 20 years, left on bad terms, and then she turned around and sued the school district. Defended it through trial. We won on multiple claims and it turned out to be a really good result. So I'll get into the differences with, between our firms and other firms, but we have a track record of working with school districts. We're also trial lawyers. I have tried, I can say in good faith, probably more than 90% more cases before a jury than attorneys in the Kansas City area. Realistically, most lawyers are settlement lawyers. They don't do a lot of trials. I'll talk about that in a little bit. But we really do prod ourselves on having the courage to actually stand up and defend school districts when they feel like they haven't done anything wrong. And on the other hand, I also have experience where we have, you know, been able to help some students in other school districts as well. Sometimes students get a bad shape too. And that's one of the new, unique things about our practice, is that we can look at things from both perspectives and we can sort of have, have a very balanced approach where if you've done something wrong, we need to talk about it. But if you haven't, we have the courage to defend it and use all of our resources to do what we need to do. Mr. Jordan, as I mentioned before, has extensive experience with boards. He, you know, you guys know how contentious politics can get. And Mr. Jordan has been able to navigate through all of that and handle with a lot of different money. We also, Kristi Borders, has a lot of experience in mediation, dealing with difficult clients, dealing with difficult situations. She actually used to own her, own her own investigation firm way back when, when she was in Georgia. We do plenty of, I've done plenty of trainings on the anti-discrimination laws, the anti-retali- one of the big things we prod ourselves in is preventing things from blowing up that really cost a lot of time and resources and that really drenches school districts of time and money. So, now, what is it that differentiates us from a lot of other firms? Well, first of all, we really take a partnership approach with our clients. For one, we really vet our clients carefully and we intentionally don't keep hundreds and hundreds of clients. Other firms who have, be careful of firms who have hundreds of clients because chances are, they're not going to give you the specialized attention that you probably need. The more clients they have, the less attention they can give you. We intentionally want to provide quality services and keep our client list low so that we can focus and give them much more attention. We're also Kansas City-based. We're 15 minutes away. We grew up in Kansas City. We love Kansas City. We are here when you call us, we are responsive. Now, we also have high quality and I usually hate to brag on ourselves, but I do need to discuss that. As mentioned, me and Mr. Jordan worked at some of the biggest law firms now, not just locally but internationally. I will admit that our rates are higher than some of the other rates that maybe you've seen. One of the things that me and Mr. Jordan had, had done though is, when we were at our bigger firms, our rates were probably 40 to almost 50% higher than what they are right now with what we can charge. And we are proud of, one of the reasons we wanted to start a smaller practice is because we can work with smaller businesses to be able to do this type of work. And I will also tell you that we really do have a love for the school district and for this community. And while we think our rates are already reasonable, we are willing to negotiate. But many times you have to be careful with some of the firms who are the cheapest ones because sometimes you get what you paid for. And many times, just like a car, you think, you buy the cheapest car, it turns out costing you more. I've seen the experience where many times other firms will give you a really cheap rate, but then they'll bill double the time to compensate for that.
Mr. Green, your, your 10 minutes is up.
10 minutes is up. Thank you very much. We would be very much pleased to serve the school district.
Okay, and we have questions for you. Director Berger?
Okay. You've kind of answered this, but this gives you an opportunity to add just a little bit more. Please share a brief overview of your firm's experience and your connection to Kansas City, which you could add a little there, and education systems.
Excellent question. We are from Kansas City and the Kansas City area. We attended the schools, me and Mr. Jordan did, in the Hickman Mills School District. We pride ourselves on being Kansas City-based. We actually have occasionally taken cases on a national basis. But this is where home is, this is where our headquarters is, and this is where we like to partner with people with long-term relationships so that we can be of maximum benefit.
Thank you.
Excellent question, thank you.
Director Townsend?
Okay. All right. That's me. How would, how do you or would you approach balancing legal compliance with practical needs of the school board or slash school district?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Townsend. And I think that our approach to always focus on what are your needs? Many times lawyers think, no, no, no. Our task is see what the needs are, what's the solution, and see how we can be able to make it work. Sometimes things may not be workable, but more than oftentimes, you know, in this area of practice, most of the time the laws are written for the best interest of the students and for, and for the district. So we believe that by being creative and using our experience and the skills that we have, that we can always work the best that we can to find solutions so that the board can meet its goals.
Okay, thank you. Director Coleman?
Good evening. Boards often struggle with legal procedure and making educated decisions. How would you support the board in addressing procedure and legal dilemmas?
Excellent question, Director Coleman. Once again, I think that once we have a clear direction on what the goal is, and this board has done an excellent job. I've seen the progress that they've made in this district. And you need lawyers that are in sync with what your goals are. We listen to the goals and our job is try and get you to reach that goal as quickly, as, as, you know, as efficiently as what we possibly can and to do everything that we can. If something doesn't line up, that's part of our job is to tell you that. But we also have to keep the best interests of the students and the people involved, the board involved, and do everything we can to make those things come together, even when it's difficult to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir, good evening, sir.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Good evening to all three of you, thank you. What strategy do you use or would you use to ensure that school board members understand legal risks and implications of their decisions?
Excellent question, Mr. Brooks. By the way, thank you, Mr. Brooks, for all your service to the school districts, to the district over the years. You're one of my heroes. I want to thank you personally. And I think, once again, we have to always come back to what's the, what's in the best interest of the students? What's in the best interest of the board? And our job is not just to tell you what you can't do, but to figure out a way, possible. This district has made tremendous progress and the last thing you need are attorneys who's going to say no and that you can't continue doing it. Our job is to try and do the best that we can so you can continue making progress. And we would be sure to do that and to make sure it's within the bounds of the law to do so. Excellent question.
Thank you. I, I guess I will take the final question. How, how do you see your role in advising the board versus individual board members?
Excellent question. I think it comes back to, and this goes to some of the ethics rules that are dictated by the Missouri bar, is our client is essentially the school district and, and the board is not an individual member. So we always have to keep that, keep in mind that our goal is to actually serve the district, serve, as a client, serve the board and not any, any individual members. The only way that, to us, that could get a little bit tricky, but then not so, is if the individual board member gets sued. You know, I've had that happen where individual teachers get sued. So then we have to look at that and go through conflicts check. And usually there is no conflict and we do what we have to do to, most, many times, you know, there is no conflict between the district and the teacher and many times individual board members. But as long as we always keep in sight, the board as a whole and also the district as a whole, we believe that we can always find harmony and a way to make solutions work.
Thank you. You have four minutes to make your closing statement.
I try and make it in two.
Okay.
We really do appreciate this opportunity. I'm a huge fan of many of the people on the board, especially Mr. Brooks, who has done a lot for the, the community and the school district over the years. I think that it's important though that, you know, you have lawyers who care about the district. We don't prod ourselves on trying, trying to, you know, get rich off of clients. We prod ourselves on high-quality legal work where we can actually make the community a better place. So we have a great affinity for the school district. We thank you for everything that you've done. And, you know, once again, we would do everything within our power to be able to make this work with our rates and everything else. And it would just be a great pleasure to be able to serve you guys and to serve the community in taking this district to the next level. So thank you so much. Do you guys have anything to add? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you. And we will be making our decision at our next board meeting.
Thank you.
In January.
If, if anyone has any additional questions that I didn't address or rates or anything else, I'm happy to coordinate with whoever the person is to flesh out any more details or any questions that the board might have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. All right, well, I guess you know everybody. I know everybody. I know. Know everybody. Restful?
Yeah. Oh, but he already let him go get the other person, right?
Yeah. You can, you, you can go, run, 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 run. Oh, okay, all right.
If I, hey, if I run, I might fall.
Oh, well, yeah.
Then we'll need a lawyer for real.
Yep.
Glad I took a nap today.
Yeah, I didn't take.
Actually, I'm taking one every day since my surgery. I've taken a nap every day.
Because you're not allowed to do stuff that you would normally be doing.
It's true. Is that all that I know?
Because I have to check myself.
You couldn't get in it? I had problems getting in and I had to call down there and they just went ahead and got me in.
Welcome, come on up. Thank you for being patient with us. I'm sorry we ran behind schedule, but you will have 10 minutes to do your opening statement and then we allow 10 minutes for questions. So if you want to utilize your time presenting in 15 minutes, I think we can run through the questions real fast.
Sure. I will probably not use all 10 minutes, recognizing that.
Can you come closer to the mic?
Come a little closer.
Yes, sir.
So let me introduce myself. I'm Josh Douglas with Micas O'Toole. This is Abby Whitek, also with Micas O'Toole. We are the Kansas City contingents, contingent of a statewide law firm. We are very happy to be here tonight, appreciate being on your list of possible law firms that you would work with as a partner. We are a law firm dedicated to advancing education in the state of Missouri. We have represented over 250 school districts over the last couple of years. We've been doing that for a long time. We have 18 attorneys who are education attorneys. They may do other things on occasion, but their primary focus and goal is to advance students' interests in the state of Missouri. So what does that mean? That means we deal with crises. When a school district has a problem and they need assistance, they call us. We deal with special ed issues. We deal with open records issues. We deal with employment issues. We deal with constituency issues. You name it, we've done it. And we are here tonight to propose providing this service to the Hickman Mills School District. If you've heard of education law firms in the state of Missouri, you've probably heard of us. We present at statewide conferences. We do board trainings. We provide webinars for, for free to school administrators. We, what do we call them, Friday, what?
Spotlight series.
Spotlight series on Fridays. We cover all kinds of topics and we are happy to do so because it helps Missouri school districts serve the students that we are dedicated to. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're all here for. So why should you choose us? Not only do we have the knowledge that you've talked about, Abby and I are here in Kansas City. We obviously help other school districts throughout the state, but we're just down the road. At my time, 10 years ago, I was with the Kansas City, Missouri School District, helped them through their accreditation issues. In fact, I think I was there when they lost accreditation, but it wasn't my fault, I promise. The, at that time, we ran through, I think it was a cut, we had two superintendents who were temporary and then we had a new superintendent come in, Dr. Amato, and I helped him put in place the, the mechanisms that he wanted to use to address the accreditation issues. And I would be happy and proud to be a part of your efforts in dealing with the state. I have not been a part of Hickman Mills in the past. I only know what's public and I've read the news stories and I understand the recent discussions with the state. I'd be happy to be a part of that, to the extent- I'd be happy to be a part of that, to the extent you needed it. I have no doubt that you have, um, the mechanisms in place to address those issues, and you're making great gains. Um, but we have, um, a whole, um, law firm full of attorneys who have helped districts in their systemic approach to meeting the, the demands of running a, a larger school district. I think that's all I have. I would refer you to our bid response, it has the numbers. Um, we have lots of numbers and metrics in there. Um, you, as you can imagine, um, with it, with 250 school districts, we have a lot of phone calls, a lot of issues. Um, we pride on ourselves on being responsive, available, um, and quick to return and, and answer the questions that you need answered. One other thing, that, that I think our firm, uh, is unique in, and it's, it's the statewide presence, and it's the recognition of systemic issues that you may face locally. And you may not realize that there's a school district 250 miles away in southeast Missouri who just got the same demand letter, right? We probably got that same letter, and we can identify those patterns and help you address those concerns that may feel local, but are in fact statewide. I think with that, I will take any questions you have.
Director Berger?
Please share a brief overview of your firm's experience and your connections to Kansas City and the education systems.
Well, um, so, I was with the Kansas City Missouri School District for a year, focused on special education. Uh, after a year, uh, the general counsel left, uh, and I became the general counsel. I was there for two and a half years, this was at a time, uh, when charter schools were expanding, we were shedding students, we were running out of DSEG money, uh, we had all kinds of turnover at the administrative positions. Uh, we faced accreditation, um, uh, issues. Um, and so I became very familiar with education in Kansas City at that time. I left there and became, uh, a team leader, then the chief attorney, and then the office director for the, the Office for Civil Rights that was based here in Kansas City. That office oversees, um, the investigation of civil rights complaints, not just in Kansas City, but in many states, Kansas, Missouri, um, South Dakota, Oklahoma, a couple more. But I've always been in Kansas City, I've stayed in Kansas City. Uh, when I joined, uh, when Abby and I both joined Micaso Tool, we went to St. Louis, because that's where the firm was located. But the firm has allowed us to come back to Kansas City, and we now have a presence here, and we are, uh, looking forward to expanding our presence here and continuing it. Thank you.
Uh, Director Townsend?
How do you, or would you, or, how do you, or would you approach balancing legal compliance with practical needs of the district?
Okay. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Townsend, could you turn your mic on, so we can have your question recorded?
Okay.
Because you can say, please repeat your question.
That was just practice.
Yeah, that was practice. Scratch it from the record.
It was thinking time.
Okay, do you? I mean, how do you, or would you approach balancing legal compliance with the practical needs of the school board slash district?
So, every legal issue is bookended by practicality, right? You have financial concerns, you have, uh, employee concerns, uh, you have governance concerns. There are all kinds of pressures coming at every single decision you have to make in, in, in the legal field, right? So, um, one, money solves everything, but there's not enough money to solve everything. Um, and so oftentimes, we get to a point where we can't spend enough money to solve this particular issue, so maybe we, maybe we give concessions on something else. So, um, let me put that in concrete terms. Student discipline is an issue where, um, oftentimes, we see the desire of a building level, building-level administrator at conflict with special education obligations. Right, and so then the question is, how do you meet the special education obligations for the student while also preserving the safety and security of the staff and the members of that building? That's oftentimes, uh, a difficult, uh, line to walk. We get to the legal answer by identifying first what the goal is. What's the goal? Is it the safety of the building? Well, let's preserve the safety of the building, but let's figure out a way to continue to service the student. Um, that's case by case, there are macro issues. So for instance, if you have an employee negotiating group, and the, the demand is for a, a raise across the board that the district simply cannot, um, afford, what else can you do to meet that demand? To pivot and to provide the, a solution that you're comfortable with, and that the person making the demand is comfortable with?
Thank you. Ms. Director Coleman?
Thank you for being here. Boards often struggle with legal procedure and making educated decisions. How would you support the board in addressing procedure and legal dilemmas?
There's no one way of doing that. Um, it is, again, case by case. Having trust, um, in.
Closer to the mic.
Sorry, I, microphones and I, we don't get along. The, uh, having a, a candid relationship between your attorney, um, and the board is absolutely vital. I have been in situations where board members viewed my actions when I gave legal advice as a betrayal, I'll be frank. Um, I've had board members yell at me during meetings because they felt like I should have, um, given different legal advice. I can only give the legal advice that I, that I can, right? Political decisions are not your attorneys. A lot of attorneys like to make political decisions, and in fact, I'm probably guilty of doing that a few times in my, in my career. Um, but I try very hard, um, and all of us at Micaso Tool try very hard to be, uh, accessible to board members, recognizing when there is a, a board-specific concern, um, or an administrative-specific concern. Um, and, uh, helping, uh, bridge the, the gap sometimes, when those, those concerns, those concerns are, are divergent. Um, and ensuring that whatever I do does no harm, right? It's, the Hippocratic oath is not just for doctors, it's for lawyers too. Um, and so I come at every, every decision, uh, first, trying to make sure that I don't actually create more problems than what the board is asking me to solve.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brooks? We have one member on, online.
You can look this way.
You can see his head. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, thank you for your time. What strategies do you or would you use to ensure that school board members understand legal risks and implications of their decisions?
Thank you for that, Mr. Brooks, the, um, we do board trainings all the time. Uh, we help with policy revisions all the time. Um, we work with MSBA, I've given MSBA trainings, I've worked with MSBA to provide webinars. Again, it comes down to a candid and direct relationship with your attorney. Knowing, knowing exactly what the issues are, um, and doing so in a, in a, uh, comprehensive way leads to the, a, a better legal, um, approach and outcome. So, uh, one, I would answer the phone when called, right? That's not always a given, uh, when you deal with attorneys. Two, um, I would provide whatever training, um, and our firm would provide additional training. Uh, we have some folks in our firm who were, who were just ninjas at what they do. Uh, and those, all of those folks would be at your disposal. Um, we have experts in, um, employment, uh, law, we have experts in contract law. All of those folks would be at your disposal. So, uh, we would, we would bring to bear the full force of our law firm to help you identify issues and prevent, um, conflicts, um, with the folks that, um, who are interested in your decision-making.
Thank you. How, how do you see your role in advising the board versus individual board members?
That, that's an interesting question, because I'm on a board myself, and I know that sometimes, um, individual board members have, um, approaches that, that they want to, they want to advance. Um, in fact, in, when I was in Kansas City, we had a board member who was, who was dedicated to installing, um, environmentally-friendly chillers on the top of every building. And so we never had a board meeting where that issue didn't come up. I provided advice to that board member, I provided him with resources. Um, but at the end of the day, it's the majority of votes that make the decision, that speaks for the board. Every board member has a voice, but the entire board has the decision. And so I would, I would help the, the voices, uh, be heard, um, to the extent that I could, and it was appropriate for me to do so. Uh, but then I would, um, I would look to discharge the decision of the board.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for being patient with us. Uh, we will be making our decision at our January board meeting.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great evening.
Madam Chair, I, is there a possibility? Is there a possibility that the gentleman could just make a couple-minute closing statement?
Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Four minutes to, uh, make your closing statement.
Would you like to ask?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
We enjoyed, actually, the extra time in the lobby to talk about our passion for education, and how we got here, and how that it has arisen in the cases we have worked on lately. I grew up, to answer your question, in Blue Springs, and my parents went to Independence. Uh, Josh and I were talking about our passion for public schools, and how you empower those students in the district through empowering your staff, your administrators, your board, and your community involvement in your educational institution. And just how ma, much that matters right now, more than ever, as school districts have become popular in the news post-COVID, and this area of law, and your role as board members have really expanded. So, this is something that we do all day, every day, and are very passionate about what we do from both the district's side, and staff, and the student's side, and we're grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything to add to that, Abby did well. I, I, I would just say that, um, we are, um, dedicated to assisting school districts in meeting their legal demands. Uh, we do some other things, but they're side projects. Our goal is to assist school districts. And we assist school districts of the largest magnitude and of the smallest magnitude. They all have the same statues, except St. Louis, they have their own statues. Uh, but, uh, they all have the same requirements when it comes to open records, they all have the same requirements when it comes to FAP. Uh, they have unique characteristics, because every community is unique. Uh, and we, um, are here to serve and hope to do so at Hickman Mills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. Uh, refresher triangles, I think everybody.
Uh, we still have another item.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Madam President, your item is now.
No, we got, we still have another item.
We got a, one more item, are you ready to leave the hospital?
Well, give us, give us five minutes, Mr. Brooks, and then, uh.
I've been ready to leave since I got here.
Miss, we'll see if you want to come up and, uh, let's, uh, expedite this, because the board's been a long night, and, uh, we still have training to do.
Yeah, I think we may not do the training, we may not do the training.
Okay.
Did you do the refresher course?
Yeah, and it was in everything with my background.
Well, yeah, me and Mr. Brooks didn't get an opportunity, but we can do that.
Let's, let's get this done.
There we go, okay. Thank you. All right, good evening, board, or should I say, good morning? Um, this is the time of year where we are needing to approve our annual audit for the prior school year. Um, normally, you have the auditors standing up here, um, doing this for us, but they had conflicts with their calendars this time, so they will be here in January to present. But because I need an approval by December 31st, I'm going to go ahead and give you a very short, sweet, "We did great," and I'm going for approval. So, um, if you'll go to the next slide for me, um, please, and see if I can read this. Um, basically, the audit goes over, and they look at our federal funding, our state funding, local funding, they look at our transportation, um, our attendance, um, just, it's the picture of the district as a whole. Um, and so that's what this, um, audit has done. And as we go to the next slide, I'm going really quickly here. Indexes. Okay, um, and this is a picture of the financials, you'll see that we ended with $37 million at the end of the school year, with the 33 points, I think it's eight, I can't see it, 33.8% fund balance going into the beginning of the school year. Next slide, please. So, um, in an audit, there are four different opinions that can be done. There's a clean audit, which is, presents fairly. There is the qualified opinion, which presents fairly with, uh, targeted, um, issues. There is the adverse opinion, when there is also no opinion, basically due to limited scope. So the Hickman Mills School District is very happy to say that we are in the clean opinion. If you go to the next slide, please, um, presented fairly. So the number one, um, as usual, we do very well here on the school district's audit, and it's something I'm very proud of. Um, so as you'll see, and you'll have a much larger presentation, um, once the auditors are here next month. So I just took little snippets of what they had here. So, um, and then the next slide is, I'm just, uh, the superintendent is recommending approval of the 2324 audit.
Madam Chair? Oh, what I was going to say, when you're saying that you need the approval before the end of the month, is that to pay for this? When you needed this approved?
Uh, no, DESI.
Yes.
It requires it to be submitted by December 31st.
By December 31st.
Yes.
Some move to approve. Even though I had concerns, but.
And I have, uh, this was posted online in PDF, but it also got the books for everybody too, so.
Madam President? All second. Ms. Ma'am? Yes. Berger?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Kendrick?
Aye.
Pass six oh.
All right.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, uh, where are we at now? Okay, financial update, uh, board announcements, um. Well, of course, we'd like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Townsend on his retirement. And his retirement. Yep, and then also, Mr. Wright for his newborn.
Baby.
Baby. And, uh, any other announcements? Ms. Coleman?
I went to see Pippen.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, yep.
I went to see Pippen, loved it. I went to the Lego competition, was blown away by that. And I want to tell you, some of the schools that I substitute in, in Kansas City, was there. And they were like, "What are you doing here?" But anyway, it was awesome. And then, lastly, I went to, um, Truman's, uh, PTO meeting, because I was just surprised that we only have maybe three. that we only have maybe three schools in the whole district that have PTOs. And I'm like, what's up with that? So I heard they're one of the best ones. So I went, was blown away by that. They had about 25 to 30 people there. And they work on getting money so that each classroom can take two field trips. And everything is paid for, the trip and the transportation. So what I hope to, what I learned from that is to help other schools that want to get PTOs up and running. I'll be glad to help, so.
Yeah, that would be wonderful because I know Warford had to close their PTA. And so hopefully, so we would start a PTO there. So hopefully, we can get that established at Warford.
Awesome.
You have a question? Comment?
Board announcements.
Oh, okay. Then no other announcements?
Things that was going on. I snuck in, because I didn't get approval to attend them. But I went to a lot of the things.
You got a list of everything that was.
No, 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 I said I didn't ask for the approval. So that's why I let Mr. Obin know I saw him at the library. I was in the back and I had my eyes on Ms. Rowe and everybody. But I've been attending a lot of the things that were going on in the school district. And I do want to thank Ms. Coleman because one or a couple of them I didn't know. But she made sure I got there, so. Yes, ma'am. And then the other one that I was pleased with is not only with the partnership with the library, but how many books those kids took out. So my thing is, I want to know, but I'm not going to do that tonight, is about the books that were being taken out of our libraries in the schools. And I just learned about that. I don't know what that was about. But I'll get that from you later. But in the meantime, I have my 27th.
Well, happy birthday. Happy birthday.
We should have had cake. We'll have to have cake.
We have cake in January.
No, no, that's okay.
Can I end the announcements?
Yes, sir.
With thanking the board for another successful year. Not our calendar year, but. Thanking the board, oh wow, look at that. Thanking the board for another successful year. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate. But be well, get some rest. And we'll come back and do the heavy lifting for the rest of the year. Look forward to that.
And thank you all. Happy holidays to everyone here.
And I was good to Ms. Kendricks, please. Put that, write that down.
She didn't disrupt meeting this time, no. Just don't put that in there. We have our MSBA training, but it looks like just me and Mr. Brooks have not completed it. So I will not force any other board members to be here to continue that. I think we can handle it over the weekend if Ms. Hicks can show me how to get in. Because I couldn't get in. I don't know what I was doing.
You can't use your phone.
Madam President, I'm going to blame me, but you can't get in either.
Right, I can't get in either.
And they will reset everything.
Yeah, we're going to have to call them and, because they gave me a login, but I still, it was wonky, so.
And good luck with the test.
Okay, good luck with the test.
There's a quiz there.
There's a quiz at the end, yes.
I got it wrong already the first time.
Okay.
You did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
So we will take care of that. Me and Mr. Brooks will get ours completed so that we can all be in compliance. I would entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Mr. Brooks says some. Well, Mr. Brooks, I hope you get to feeling better. And, oh, I'm just need a second. He made the motion. Okay, well, Mr., he can second. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And get well and get home.
Thank you, God bless everybody. Have a nice holiday.
All right.